All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Northborough Select Board meeting of June 17, 2024. My name is Mitch Cohen, and I chair this merry group at 6:03 p.m. I'll call the meeting to order. Oh, I have opening announcements because we are hybrid tonight. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate either in person or remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely in person and remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, respond with the affirmative, even though some of us are in person and some of us... So I think we're all in person for this part right now, but we're still going to be... Lisa's remote. So Laura, can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. Lisa, I know, is not on the public webinar yet. She will join us in executive session, then will join us for the public session. It was just easier technically to do that. Tim is remote tonight. Diane is on vacation, so that's it for the group. When Lisa comes back in, I will make sure that she can see it. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a (III) to discuss litigation update with respect to S.A. Farm and pursuant to Chapter 30a, Section 21a (VII) to review and consider the following executive session meeting minutes: February 26, 2024; March 25, 2024; March 27, 2024; May 13, 2024; and May 20, 2024, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Julianne, second, and by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? Julianne?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous-ish in favor. And we will now go into executive session. I believe our posting says that we will return to open session at 7 p.m., so we will not return prior to 7 p.m., even if we're done with our executive session. But it is possible always that executive session could go over, in which case the public session will begin when we conclude our executive session business. With that, we are in the executive session at 6:06 p.m.
All right, very good. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for giving us the time to do some important executive session business. I'd tell you about it, but I can't. I was going to say, but then I'd have to kill you, but I got the police chief right here. I wouldn't get away with that. Item number two, return to open session. Item number three, public comment. Is there anyone in our audience, either in person or remote, that has anything they would like to address the board on? We'll, as always, be happy to accept any comment during regular agenda items, but anything else, now is a good time. I'm seeing no hands up, either remotely or in person, so we will continue. Approval of meeting minutes, and then we will get to what I suspect a lot of people are here for. We have a lot of meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone the meeting minutes because I have some additions on some of them until the end of the meeting so that we can get on with the important thing.
So not postponing to another meeting, but just postponing it to later tonight.
Right.
We don't need a motion to do that. We'll just do it. Okay. With that being said, Police Department, promotion and appointments. Chief, would you like to join us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I believe Mr. McInerney's going to talk about the first item, which is promotion of Sergeant Adjo Moritas to lieutenant. Am I correct, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just call up Demos if that's all right.
Tim, take it away.
Thanks.
As you know, when we were hiring for the first lieutenant, Bill Griffin, Demos was in the running for that. And we also knew at the same time, we were hedging with the budget to create another position for a lieutenant, and we went to town meeting, we got that approved. Instead of revisiting and re-ashing the same process, Demos was, you know, obviously qualified and would have been selected had he not been up against William. And we didn't want to revisit that under the policies of the Police Department. You know that the chief currently hews himself in the process because of William's involvement in that selection process. So we want to move forward with promoting Demos from sergeant to lieutenant.
Sounds good to me. It looks like Dana's doing a couple of technical things. Okay, all right. Very good. So I appreciate the clarification on that. Tim, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief, did you want to say anything else on this?
I'll just, you know, Demos started here in 1997. He has held almost every position within the department. Most recently, for the past five years or so, he's been our senior sergeant, the wisest sergeant. He has been a tremendous help overseeing the day-to-day operations during the day shift. He manages our fleet. He is the, when I need something done, he's the officer I go to. He has worked hard. He born and raised in Northborough, went to Algonquin, and has made the Northborough Police his career for just 30 years, almost 30 years.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years. And he has, Mr. McInerney explained, he was in the process with Lieutenant Griffin. And thankfully, the town meeting voters supported adding this additional lieutenant. It's a much, much needed position that we've been looking forward to for a long time. The way it's going to be broken down between our two lieutenants right now is Lieutenant Griffin is going to be our administrative lieutenant, doing a lot of, most of the year, behind-the-scenes work, accreditation, training, things that maybe the public doesn't see. And Lieutenant Adjo Moritas, Demos, will be our operations lieutenant, who will be basically in charge of running the operations during the day. You know, making sure scheduling is done and the shifts are covered, and he's going to be that important person. So looking forward to the board's consideration on this vote.
Okay, very good. I trust that you have some family with you?
I do not.
You do not? Okay, so all these are for some other fine folks?
Yes.
Okay. Because you've been here for 27 years, everybody knows when you do.
I think it's their time to shine. I was shiny a long time ago.
And, Mr. Chair, I will add that if this gets approved tonight, I held off until tomorrow. I was going to send all of you an invitation to next week's swearing-in of both lieutenants. And Sergeant Monfill, who was promoted back in May, it'll be next Wednesday in the afternoon at the Senior Center. And we'll have a little ceremony, so I didn't want to put the cart before the horse. We wanted to make sure it got approved tonight.
I'm not terribly worried, but thank you for that.
His family must have been, because they're waiting till next week.
Very good. Anyone have any questions on the board?
I'm just happy that we have such an amount of good talent in our police force, and I'm sure he'll be a great lieutenant.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
I was going to say the same. Thank you for choosing Northborough as the town that you wanted to serve in for this amount of time. I'm grateful that you've taken this next step. And will you still be, like, will we still see you out and around town?
Yep.
Okay.
One of my duties will still be special events, a little Apple Fest, road races. That's, I'm gaining more responsibility, but I'm keeping a lot of what I do now, so.
Perfect. Well, enjoy seeing you around town, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good move. All right, would someone like to make a motion? This is yours.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Sergeant Demos Adjo Moritas as police lieutenant, effective July 1, 2024, as recommended by the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion other than hooray?
Congratulations.
All those in favor? Hold on, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, sorry. Aye.
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 Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote aye is unanimously in your favor. Congratulations.
Now let's move on to the more important people.
The new ones.
Excellent. So our two new officers in 27 years. Nobody will come and care about your promotions at that point, but today is another matter. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, could I call them both up at the same time?
Absolutely, yes, very much.
Bring another chair up if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's obviously an exciting night. Anytime you can promote somebody and also welcome in two new people. It, you know, doesn't happen a lot, which is a good thing. That means we retain people. People make it a career working here, so we don't often have vacancies. So this is an exciting night, and I have two very great people who are going to do good things here in Northborough. So the first, back in December 31st, when the former, when Chief Liver retired, that created an opening, a position. Obviously, I was appointed, promoted, but then that created an actual person to be hired. So we advertised back in middle of March for a patrol officer. We really were hoping to hire two. And that's when we asked a town meeting for an additional officer this year to have a little bit of growth in the department. And we're very fortunate and extremely grateful that the residents supported that concept, and we were able to get an additional person to hire. So when we advertised, we were really hoping to get two, and that's ultimately what we got. So both of these people I'll speak about individually. I'm asking that the board consider a vote for the approval of this. It'd be effective on July 1st of this year. The first, excuse me, during the resume process, we went through the resumes. We then condensed to a sizable number that we brought in front of a panel of police officers. Mr. Cohen, representing the select board, was present, as was the assistant town administrator, Diane Whackel. And I believe we had a sergeant present, an actual patrol officer present as well, and I was observing these interviews. From there, the number was dwindled to a more manageable number, and, you know, a select number of people were brought in front of myself for final review. And I'm happy to say that they are both here right now. So without further ado, the first person for your consideration is Corinne Marqueta. Corinne, who's seated to my right, grew up in Millbury, Massachusetts. She currently resides in Grafton, Massachusetts. She is a graduate of Pittsburgh State University with a major in criminal justice. Little fun fact that even though she's not from town, both her parents are from town, and her mother graduated from Algonquin and has a lot of connections to here in Northborough. So she was very excited to apply for our position, and I think having So she was very excited to apply for our position, and I think having that close connection to Northborough, you know, made it extra special. So with the approval from the board tonight, should the board approve it, Corinne will be starting the Police Academy July?
Eighth.
Eighth of this year. She'll be going about five and a half months to the Police Academy, where she'll learn all sorts of the laws and how to, you know, respond to emergencies and all that fun stuff you learn in the academy, physical fitness. And after five and a half months, she'll graduate, and she will join us probably around late December. That'd be my guess. And after that, she's a field training officer for between 10 and 12 weeks, where she's with another Northborough officer, riding in a cruiser, learning our policies and procedures. So really, we won't see Corinne on the streets of Northborough by herself in a cruiser probably till about late February, early March. So it's quite a process from the time you apply for the position back in March to the time you're actually on the road. It's quite the process. So that is Corinne, and we'll be happy to have her join us. Seated to Corinne's right is Hunter Luby. Hunter Luby grew up in Millbury, Massachusetts, where he currently still resides. Hunter is also a Fitchburg State University graduate. They were a couple of years apart?
Yeah.
Couple of years apart in school, also a criminal justice major. Fitchburg State has a unique program where they actually run their own police academy after they graduate with their bachelor's degree. And Hunter chose to go that route after his graduation, which was just in May?
December.
December, sorry. So he actually entered the Fitchburg State Police Academy in May. And his, in five weeks, he's already been in, he's in five weeks. He's, it's going really well for him. And Hunter will be graduating the academy in September. Their academy is a little shorter because they learn a lot of the, a lot of the academy is done during the latter half of their bachelor's degree. They get a lot of the credits for it. So the academy's a little shorter, so he'll be out in September, and we'll start his field training soon after that. So both of them interviewed really well. I think we got the cream of the crop. I'm very happy to bring them for the board today, and they all have a lot of family behind them. So I ask that the board consider appointing both Corinne Marqueta and Hunter Luby for patrol officer positions effective July 1. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Good to see you both again. I will say that the interview process that you were part of, you had some real good competition, but I'm very pleased that the two of you are before us today. It was a very worthwhile process from my perspective. You brought, Chief, you brought some really good candidates in that day. It was a long, it was a long day with a lot of people to talk to, but again, very, very pleased for Northborough as to how it worked out. Are there any questions from members of the board? Laura?
Not a question, but thank you for choosing Northborough as the town that you'd like to join. Nice to meet you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Corinne Marqueta and Hunter Luby as full-time police officers effective July 1, 2024, as recommended by the police chief.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, and thank you. Congratulations, Hunter.
Thank you. You wanted to downplay yours, that's okay.
Congratulations, good to see you again. Congratulations. And congratulations to all your family members and everybody else. Well, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so excited.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming, yeah.
Who, are you family member too?
I'm Corinne's mom. I, this is her dad, and we both grew up in New Haven, and I went to Algonquin when I graduated from Algonquin. So we're really excited that she's here in our hometown.
We're happy to.
Thank you.
Some great recommendations.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Bye-bye. All right. Next up, we have Attorney Tyler Hensler, representing Wegmans, to consider a request from Wegmans Massachusetts Incorporated, DBA blah, 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 for a change in officers' directors for all alcoholic license. And we have Tyler remotely. So Tyler, I'm going to bring you in.
Hello.
Hi there. All right, so we've just concluded some fun excitement here, and now we got to get down to some regular business. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what Wegmans is looking to do?
Sure. Thank you. Tyler Hensler here, representing Wegmans Massachusetts Incorporated. First, I want to thank you for letting me appear remotely so I can watch the Celtics game tonight on my couch.
Oh, sure, make us all jealous. I'll ask our cable department if there's a way we can do picture-in-picture. Sorry, please continue.
Anyways, Wegmans is here again this month to apply for a change of officers and directors. Last month, we were here for the one-day licenses, and those events, I'm told, are going very well. But today, the change of officers and directors, I'll go through the changes, but, you know, they're corporate changes. So Stephen R. Van Arsdale has retired and is being removed as secretary of Wegmans Massachusetts Incorporated, which is the licensee, it's the owner of the Wegmans in Northborough. And Aaron S. W. S. Heinz is replacing him as secretary. Also, Matthew T. Daler is being added as a director of Wegmans Massachusetts, Inc. And Nicole Wegman has been added as a senior VP and a director of the parent company, Wegman Food Markets, Inc. These are, again, corporate changes. In Northborough, nothing is changing. Nothing about the operations are changing. Again, it's just a corporate change that the AVCC makes us come to the municipalities with, so we have a few more of these. But I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Sure. Any questions for members of the board? My only question is, given this is corporate-wide, I assume you're going before a number of select boards and other groups?
I am, yeah, I'm filling in for an attorney that actually filed these, so I'm not even sure how many there are, but yeah. I'm looking very quickly, it looks like five or six, so.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, all the stores that you've got in Massachusetts are there. We have a letter in our packet from Detective Bazell saying that he looked into these folks as part of his review of this, and no concerns were found. Anybody have any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application as submitted by Wegmans Massachusetts Incorporated, DBA Wegmans, for a change of officers' directors for their all-alcoholic beverages package store license for premises located at 9102 through 9104 Shops Way.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mike, seconded by Julianne. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Tyler, thank you very much for joining us. You have your license changes.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too. Go Celtics.
We take no bias on this board, but go Celtics, makes sense. Okay, next up, we have Town Office's Feasibility Study Committee, Bill Pierce. Bill, Scott, and you've got a friend.
Hello.
If we can bring in, is it Anna Chang?
Oh, sure.
She has the presentation.
Oh, okay. I'll promote you to panelist. Try and, here we go. Hey, Anna, if you could, oh, there we go, you're already doing your thing. Good, thank you for joining us. So Bill is Chair of Town Office's Feasibility. Why don't you kick us off, introduce your guests, and go from there?
In case anyone doesn't know, my name is Bill Pierce. I am the chairman of the Town Hall Feasibility Study Committee. To my right is Ned Collier from Icon, who's our architect, and has been helping us along the project. And I think everyone knows our DPW director, who was our town liaison and staff liaison for this project. Anna is remote, she has the presentation, she's also with Icon. So a little bit about the committee first, in case anyone doesn't know. Anna, if you want to go ahead and bring up the slides.
It seems like I'm having some trouble. One second, please.
Sure.
There we go. Let's try this again.
Yep, we see your presentation now.
There we go.
Thank you. So I won't read through all of this, but basically, the Town Hall Feasibility Study Committee was formed in order to find a new or to renovate a town hall for the town of Northborough. We had four properties that we had to look at. They were this building here that we're in right now, the White Cliffs, the current fire station, which will be vacant in, hopefully, cross our fingers, a few years, and Four West Main Street, which was the old, old town hall. We weren't charged with finding what to do with all of those buildings. Our charge was strictly to find, pick one for a town hall. So that's where we really concentrated on. First off, before we go any further, Anna, if you want to go to the next slide, I really want to thank the members of this committee. I don't know if they're online now, I did send this invite, but Dario, Damari, Aaron Hutchins, Ashley Davies, Kristen Wickstead, Linda Brankle, and Judy Boyle. They all did tremendous amount of work. We actually had, I had to go through and look, we had 11 meetings in eight months to go through this. The first meeting was in July of, July 27, 2023. In October, we actually had three architects come in and make a presentation. In November, we actually chose Icon, who Ned here is sitting next to us, and Anna. And then in January, Icon did a lot of work talking with the town staff, finding out what we needed for a town hall, moving forward as a town. Icon made their first presentation of that information in January of 2024. February, I think all of you, including you, Michael, before you were a selectman, were at the town hall for our presentation and public comment on that. We got a lot of great feedback, and we took that back to Icon. And then we made a final vote on March 27. So before we go into the final vote, I'd like to have Ned and Icon actually talk about what their findings were, and then we'll get into the final vote and the recommendation.
Great, thank you. So I will give a quick summary. This probably shouldn't take more than 10 minutes or so. This is where we began, why a new or renovated town hall. I love working in New England because we can find old drawings like this to use. Anna, next, please. And we went through, as has been indicated, a fairly lengthy process, particularly with the staff, because we needed to validate what the town hall space needs would be in a future building. I'm sorry, Anna, if you just want to step back real quick, I'll hit. So this is what we'll be covering in the next, in the next few minutes, and then we'll look specifically at the site that we were asked to develop to a further degree. Okay. So it was a three-step process, the building programming, I was just starting to discuss. I have commented about this previously, and it's worth saying again, the staff were terrific. They were very modest in their expectations, and that meshed well with our experience in working with town hall staff and what their needs might be. So there was an alignment, I think, between what the town hall staff were asking for and what we would normally expect for a Massachusetts town. Then there was the analysis of the four building sites and test fits for each one of those, and those were analyzed in terms of, well, we'll go into that, actually, the criteria is listed on subsequent slides. We then did cost analysis, and then it ultimately came before the committee for a vote. Okay, Anna? So at the time, so the existing building is just under 30,000 square feet, contains the recreation department, and it contains the DPW. At the time we were presenting the project, we were suggesting a roughly 26,500-square-foot building program with the recreation relocated. We did a study of the fire station, and it is a good fit for that, as well as the DPW. Subsequent to that, the DPW is now back in the building, but it was a swap of programs, so the size hasn't changed. So you're all familiar with this, the four sites that we studied, and Anna, if you want to keep going? And images of the four buildings. White Cliffs was the favored site for the project, and it is what we have moved forward in developing to a slightly greater degree. And the evaluation criteria that I was talking about are in the bullet points on these and a couple subsequent slides. So in this case, the existing, sorry, too quick, Anna. The existing building conditions were unique, as you all know, and we did assess, we assessed White Cliffs more for its historic and community value as opposed to its physical infrastructure, which needs a renovation. We also looked at the ability for the program we had developed with the staff to fit within the available facilities and the ways in which it could enhance town services. And one of the things that we liked about White Cliffs is that we could actually put some of the town hall programming in White Cliffs, thereby reducing the amount of new construction associated with that project. Its one downside is it is slightly out of your downtown district, that corner of the site kind of touches it. Next, Anna? We looked at parking capacity. As you might imagine, the White Cliff site is far more accommodating than any of the other sites. We basically went from no parking to being able to meet and exceed the projected parking need. There was a kind of strong feeling about the uniqueness of the mansion and its association with Northborough, giving it a strong potential for civic presence. Some really interesting sustainable design opportunities, not the least of which, and this was true for all of them, is the adaptive reuse of an existing building, which is often described as the greenest building, the one that already exists. It also has very good site conditions. And Anna, if you want to go to the next slide? It also has very good site conditions, and Anna, if you want to go to the next slide. We, we did this for all of the sites, but we always begin our projects with an assessment of the environmental conditions that surround the site, and opportunities, particularly in this day and age, for daylight harvesting, renewable energy sources, and, and the ability to create a high-performance building envelope. And this site scored very highly in all of those categories. Next, please. So this is indicating the restored mansion, and what you can, what you, if you, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, the sort of various additions that have been attached to it over the years are removed, it is restored to its historic character. If, if this were to go forward, and I, even, even if the White Cliffs is dealt with, and I'm sure there'll be a debate about it historically being brown, not white. And, but of course, we, we punted on that, and our model is white. But it is a really beautiful property, and we think has a lot of merit as a future town hall. Next, please. So the, the addition is to what is effectively the back of the existing building. The style of it, the, you know, all of that is sort of to be developed, the, the actual programmatic layout. We tested all of that, so you'll see it. None of it's intended to be final in any way, shape, or form. There is an interesting condition whereby we would be, or a future architect would be working with the National Park Service's Secretary of the Interior Standards for restorations and additions to historically significant buildings. That's a bridge the town will have to cross because there is a contradiction between the town planning criteria and the Secretary of the Interior's standards, but that's down, down the pike. I know, I bring that up now because there were some questions about the kind of modernity of the sketches that we're showing, and, and that, that, there was no feedback in our developing, developing those images. It was purely a result of working with the Secretary of the Interior's standards and their desire for contrast and complement when you're dealing with a historic building. Again, that can be addressed later in a much more in-depth design process. The north elevation of the building is, again, very schematic, but it's intended to be the kind of simple working side, so to speak, of the, of the town hall. So you have almost perfect north-south orientation in terms of daylight harvesting and managing solar heat loads. This is indicating the, the plan on the first level, all of the first level of White Cliffs would become community space. It can be programmatically separated from the functional part of, of town hall, or they can work in concert with one another. The second floor, we felt was really well-suited for town administrative spaces as well as staff spaces, so not, not so much public, other than public coming to the administration. And then the big, simple box is all of the departments and their service desks, and the elliptical element is this room. And, and the thinking there is, we're, we're looking to sort of complement the, not the irregularity of the Queen Anne Mansion, but the kind of mass and volume of it, rather than having the, the whole building kind of overwhelm it. So the idea of putting a kind of secondary element, which happens to be the Select Board Room, at a scale that's commensurate with the mansion, is what you're seeing as the design intent in this case. And then the, then the rest of the building is, is a relatively economic box, so to speak. Okay, Anna? And then there's some, just some sketches of what the interior could potentially look like. The upper left, we're, we're suggesting that you might have some big pivoting doors that will allow the Select Board Room to open into the public lobby space. Obviously, acoustics need to be paid attention to. Then, looking at the lobby in the lower image, looking back at the White Cliffs, the backside of White Cliffs, and then just a balcony above on the lower right, looking back down into the lobby with the potential of a kind of overlook into the Select Board Room. And then finally, at the, the second level, the idea of something that is open and easily navigated by the public, simple wayfinding, and, and an organized public face for all of the town departments is essentially what we're, what we're describing in this case. Back to you.
So when, when we came up with the vote for this, one of the things I wanted to do was I wanted to be able to present this board with multiple options, right? In giving, we had six different options, some renovations, some new construction. So I wanted to make sure that when we gave our recommendation, if the first one didn't, didn't pass, you still had other, you, you knew what the other options was. It wasn't going to have to be another feasibility study to go and look at all the buildings all over again. What we found when we did the actual vote, so what I did is I had everyone vote their rank, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, lowest number, lowest number 1. What we found is that all of the members, except for one, voted for White Cliffs as their first. The one that voted, didn't vote first, voted at second. That's why you see such a large number here. Now, this is after we got the, which there's some documentation on the website about how, about the costs. It's not the cheapest, but it's not the most expensive either. So that's why I went with the ranked choice voting, instead of, you know, just giving you one recommendation and that's it. So this way you'd have something to go back on.
I, I don't think I understand those numbers. The, so the high number means?
The lowest number, lowest number wins.
Lowest number wins, okay.
Lowest number wins. So I had to win, everyone rank 1 through 6, and then just added them up. So if you voted 1, then, you know, it was a 1 to that number, to that.
I see, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Are you open for questions at this point?
Yeah, we're open for questions. I think that's our presentation, right, Anna? You don't have any other slides?
Yeah, discussion, there we are. So one question I have, and I, I have watched, I think I watched all of your meetings and attended a couple in person, but I know not everybody in the public has that will be watching this meeting. So one question is, just from the start, why do we need to do anything for town hall? I mean, we have a town hall, it is functional. I wonder if, if any of the three of you could speak to that, as far as, you know, why, why did this project get started, and why are we looking to do something? And then secondarily to that, well, can't you just, you know, fix the carpet, paint a few things, change a few things, and so forth? And I said, I know the answer to that, but I think it's helpful to, to have one of you describe that process.
I can, I can, I can cover the condition of the building through the facility's perspective and lens, and then maybe Ned, you can talk a little bit about the code requirements when it comes to modifications to buildings. We did a facility condition assessment report about a year and a half ago, went through all of the town-owned buildings, evaluated the systems, electrical, heating, air conditioning, envelopes, which is windows, roofs, doors, and exterior, as well as electrical systems and the like. So this building, the vast majority of the systems are well past its useful life. The air conditioning units are all past the useful life. The electrical, you can tell how it is because it's surface-mounted through most of our walls. Yes, the carpet is horrific, but.
It has a quaint orange to it at this point.
A dirty orange, I might add.
A nice burnt aura. The, you know, the, the roof is, is flat rubbish, well past its useful life, the windows are not efficient. So in order to renovate this building, there's, there's a couple components that need to be considered. One, conduit of operations, we're a municipality, we have to provide the surface to the community. We cannot just close down and work remotely for six months while floor one gets worked on. So there's a cost associated with renovating. Couple that with what the required upgrades would be when it comes, it comes to code compliance, the cost for renovation just continually grew until the number you saw that was ranked, I believe, fourth on the list. And Ned, you want to talk a bit about how we get triggering codes when we start spending millions of dollars?
Yeah, so there, there are two, two major codes that impact the, the cost. I think everybody's familiar with the MAAB, the Architectural Access Board, and, and that's tied into, I need Mark here for this, he gives a much better explanation than I do, my colleague is on vacation. So that's tied into having to upgrade the entire building to meet accessibility requirements. There's no doubt, under any circumstance, that would have to happen. The other is the energy code, and it has officially become much more stringent than in the past. There are a lot of things that we can do with existing buildings. We actually really advocate for keeping buildings and, and rejuvenating them, but the cost implications are significant. So you, you, you get sort of layer upon layer of cost impacts that, that tend to, in addition to the fact that you'd have to vacate the building, or at least phase it, which would drive costs up even more. So it's a combination of existing conditions, accessibility codes, energy code.
Yeah, so when you try, when you try to achieve compliance with the energy code, your windows don't meet it, the doors don't meet it, the insulation doesn't meet it, and the roof doesn't meet it. There's not a lot left that doesn't get touched at that point. Then you start fitting spaces in amongst walls that may not be quite right. So in order to spend that level of funds to renovate the building, it would make the, a sense for the community to have a building that actually provides all the services they're looking for, as opposed to kind of piecemealing it as best you can, but spending a fortune doing it.
Great, thank you. And for those at home wondering to see some of these relative costs, you put together a very good table. If you go to the town website and go to Boards and Committees, Town Office's Feasibility Study Committee, you've got a few things, including a chart of the estimated cost for each of the options that you quickly ran through earlier, and you can, you can see how doing the renovation to this building actually, in some cases, is even a little bit more expensive than the renovation addition to White Cliffs, which shocked just about everybody, but once you went through the, the reasons why, it actually does make sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's new construction versus these kind of detailed renovations.
Yeah. Good, questions from the board.
Mike? Yeah, I just want to thank Bill and his committee, Scott and Icon, for all the hard work that you did. I think you laid that out very well at the beginning. I tried to watch as many of the meetings as I could, I was at the public input session that went very long, so certainly appreciate, you know, everything that you and the other volunteers and, and, you know, everyday people coming together to try and come up with the, with the solution. I, I do have some questions, and I, you know, want to make sure everybody can get them in. I guess kind of where I'm at, as far as a comment, seeing, you know, all the materials, seeing the cost breakdowns, you know, my, my big concern is that we're already underway building a $45 to $50 million building. Even though there may be a need for town hall renovations or a new building, I don't see the conditions of this building, and maybe I'm incorrect, Scott, and you can correct me, that are sort of similar to the fire station and, and why, why it needs to be replaced. You know, I, I guess kind of where I'm coming from is, yeah, White Cliffs isn't the most expensive, it's not the most cheap, it's not the cheapest option, it's kind of right in the middle, but they're all fairly expensive for a town that's already going to undertake, you know, a very expensive building. So even though I, I think the, the work and everything was absolutely needed, I don't know if now is something that we, you know, that I could get behind to move forward on something like this, given the other expenses that the town has.
Right, and I would actually agree with you. I think this needs to be phased in, much like how, you know, most of the, the town departments now will do, you know, the police chief will buy one cruiser a year, right? Not five cruisers in one year, right? I don't see this project being done this year, next year, but at least we have the information, right? That's what this committee was formed for, is to get the information presented to the Select Board. If it doesn't happen in five years, in 10 years, at least we have the information. It also helps with disposition of the other buildings, right? So maybe we can come up with some funds by, you know, doing things with the other buildings. So I, I think there were, there were multiple ideas here when we, when we, when we went through this, but I think everyone on the committee agreed that this wasn't going to be a project that was going to be done anytime in the near future.
The, the, the goal and objective, as Bill indicated, is to get something through a process, so a decision has been made that this is the most logical approach for a project. One of the, one of the cost pieces that slightly drove us on, on the White Cliffs side, the committee on the White Cliffs side, was the need to restore it. It was, it was purchased with CPA funds under the historic component, so that building needs to be restored. And one of the criteria that the, that the community wanted was access to it. So this, when you, when you take that restoration number out and you put the new construction number in, it's a huge number, but it, it makes a lot of sense to give the community what they're looking for. The next step would be to take this building project, balance it with schools, roofs, additions, fire stations, what have you, over a long bonding period, and see where the debt service starts to undulate, and what, does it fit in 2030, does it fit in 2040? That's for the financial boards and committees and the, and the Select Board to consider, as well as the financial staff here, so. The expectation wasn't, wasn't to go to like, you know, town meeting next year or anything.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll echo what Bill touched on primarily, which is, at, at the same time, we have, we have just reacquired Four West Main, the, the building referred to as old town hall, even though that exact structure was never a town hall. We will hopefully be vacating the existing fire station, and, once the new station is online. What do we want to do with those buildings is a very important question for this board and for the town. We've sat around with White Cliffs for a while, that was another building that we owned, and, you know, last summer, we had, we had one project before us that wasn't going to meet, meet the threshold of approval, so we had to figure out what to do with that. It didn't make sense to hold on to all three and figuring, oh, maybe we'll use one of them or the other or the other for town hall, let's figure out the best place where town hall will go, so then that logically frees up the other two for other things. And, and then we can work on those other things while we work on this one. And in this case, I was, I thought it was, it was kind of dreamy of an idea to put, to put town hall in White Cliffs, but watching your presentation and seeing all the data behind it, it actually makes a lot of sense. So I'm, I'm happy that it ended up there. It also gives us time to go through and apply for grants and other things that, that we've now finally started to do, to try to get White Cliffs at least, at least stabilized and cleaned up, and, and remove the additions, deal with the asbestos and mold and the other things that kind of came with the building, and get it stabilized so that when we are ready as a town to move forward, that then is in the appropriate place for it to be. I, I think if we try to, if we wanted to, for example, bring it to town meeting next year, it's too early, honestly, there's too much we need to do to prepare for that.
And, and I think it's important, and I appreciate sort of you guys making that clear, because I know some of the feedback I've gotten from people, you know, both in person and, and whatnot, is sort of like, oh my gosh, like, now they want another $45 million building, you know, for, you know, ready to go to town meeting, so I appreciate that, that open in, in the public space clarification.
So we have, we clearly have the fire station project coming up very soon, and we, we've just, we're in the process of starting feasibility on Peaslee School. My guess is it'll be fire My guess is it'll be fire station and then Peaslee School. And then we would consider town hall is probably the order that it would go. How many years between each? Don't know. Good, Lisa, I see your hand up.
Yes, I want to echo Mike's words. I think that they've done a great job. A lot of work has gone into this, a lot of thought. And I too have had many people approach me about it and about the, you know, the location of it, me keeping it out from out of town hall, excuse me, out of downtown. I think that, and I agree with Mitch and that it certainly would be after Peaslee. I think Peaslee has been waiting a long time to get its renovation. So I guess it is going to be, I guess, fire station, Peaslee, and then town offices. I don't know, I don't know that we're supposed to make any decisions tonight. I hope we not. I think that we've got a lot more to look at and, you know, the implication of tax dollars and all of that to the people. So those are kind of an overview of my remarks right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Julianne?
Is there, is there a project that you could have us look at that combines an eighteen eighties building with a modern addition?
Yes, yeah, I mean, not, I mean, there are many, actually. I would have to get organized and I'd be happy to share those with you. But this is a really, well, common's not the right word for it. A frequent architectural problem, you know, to the extent that there are standards written around it that are quite extensive. So I will, Anna and I will put together a little package of examples.
That'd be great. My understanding is that the Department of the Interior, right? They don't like that you would try to mimic another Victorian looking.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Okay.
It's very mushy language, you know, but it's very, what is clear is that they don't want you to in any way imitate or emulate a historic building.
Which kind of makes sense. So would one example be the Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that looks very interesting. Okay, so kind of a specific question. Should we be working towards getting an historic preservation status on the building now?
Oh, that's a tough one. The only reason I hesitate is it begins to sort of tie your hands. You know, because if it is a registered building, then you absolutely have to adhere. And it goes through the National Park Service. And it's a very intense, interactive project process with the NPS. We've gone through it a number of times. It's not a contentious thing. It's just you're bringing, you're inviting in a federal group to have a say in what you're doing.
So if you're going to put together some other examples, would you do like a pro and con list of getting the preservation status, the pros and the cons?
Sure, yeah.
If that's not, can we ask?
This is just part of, I think, buttoning it up, you know? Because I think, I commented to a number of people, we're quite often inheriting many years of feasibility studies. And I view this one as the first of, you know, maybe it'll be the only one. That would be an amazing thing. But more often than not with municipalities and projects like these, they go through several rounds of feasibility studies before it becomes real.
And this is our second go around as far as professionals looking at White Cliffs, not for town hall use, but for sort of general reuse. And now we're starting to get a little bit more specific. Yeah, Laura?
I also want to thank the committee and all of you for all that you've done and the thought that you've put into this. I am also concerned about the cost of the project. And you had mentioned that we would qualify for grants. I know that we had talked about the different buildings that we would be able to sell. If we could get a financial breakdown of what those numbers would look like, like how much do you think we could, in theory, get in grants to fund this?
Again, it's sort of tied up with whether the building is on the historic register and, you know, whether you can tap into those funds. I mean, there is the underutilized building.
We're in the process of applying for a grant for it now.
Which, for White Cliffs in particular, I would imagine you'd be a great candidate. They tend to focus on the envelope, the roof, you know, things that are about stabilizing a building. And I know, I know some towns have gotten some pretty significant grants.
What is really significant, like what's the range? What does that look like?
I don't know.
Okay, is it like a million dollars or is it like thirty million dollars towards a fifty million dollar project?
Well, it's going to be focused entirely on White Cliffs.
Okay.
So it's going to be within the realm of the cost for that building.
Okay.
So I don't know whether it applies to the other buildings or not.
I don't think it will.
The underutilized property, but.
My guess is no. I mean, Four West Main is a reconstruction. This building, I.
I was just meaning in particular towards the White Cliffs. If this project goes forward, we just, it's really expensive. I recognize there's definitely a need, but I'm deeply concerned about the tax impact. And I know that we all share that concern. So just trying to figure how we can reconcile that and find a solution that's going to be a town hall that is going to meet the needs of the community, but also not, you know, tax everyone out of the town.
Right.
So.
Yeah, there are, we are, we've been working with Fitchburg State for years on rehabilitating the Fitchburg Theater across from City Hall. And they've engaged, they've actually engaged consultants whose expertise is finding money to help it happen because that is a very expensive proposition.
Yeah, I mean, another attraction of White Cliffs is that there's money out there for historic properties. My gut feeling is the other properties that we'd be looking at, there probably is not.
No, they wouldn't fall in the historic category, yeah.
And unfortunately, the state, we've talked about this before, the state does not provide a building assistance program for municipal buildings as they do for schools and libraries. Fire stations, as we've talked about before, police stations and town halls, the town does not provide funding assistance for, which is unfortunate, but that's a reality.
Right.
So any construction project like this would be purely local tax dollars other than any grants that we can get. So if we can, if we can get a million dollars, if we can get two million dollars in grants, that's a million or two million dollars that we would not have to raise locally.
And I think, I think that's one of the attractive things about White Cliffs as a site is that that's something you can work on in the near term irrespective of a later phase of work.
Any other?
So how, what do we have to do to get as accurate as possible estimates on what the, you know, like Four West Main, this building would go for on the open real estate market?
So we did have a real estate consultant onboard. It's in the material that's on online. I think the conclusion of that was you would have to sort of open it to the market and see what would come of that. It wasn't, it wasn't particularly conclusive.
Right.
Okay, so we retain a real estate agent to just test the market?
Well, yes, yeah, essentially. Not unlike what you did with White Cliffs.
Okay.
And we did have specific thoughts. Four West Main, for example, the consultant felt like it was a better candidate for housing than other functions, than commercial functions or municipal functions. It's a very funky building on the inside. And they took that and put five stories. And it created some really odd conditions. And then I think we really felt like, meaning my office, that the fire station was a really good candidate for recreation. And I know there's thoughts of it being a brew pub and things like that. But it was such a sort of simple fit for that need. And it unburdens town hall from a function that isn't really central to municipal administration. Not to diminish recreation.
Well, it's important. It just doesn't need to be in the same building as administration and finance and public, maybe the public works offices, depending upon where it is. Sorry, that's a different question. And all the other assessors and everything else that have to be together in town hall.
But, so let's just say that people in town like the idea of moving forwards slowly with White Cliffs. To have two buildings then, I mean, wouldn't it be more economical to have parks and rec at the new building than to, for the town to own the old fire station, which would be the old fire station then, and that? Isn't, wouldn't that be a way of saving money?
I would think that part of the analysis during design would be, what's the disposition value of the old fire station? What's the renovation cost to make it a rec center? And what's new construction cost over the town hall? My guess is that the recreation facility would likely be pretty well separated from the town hall operations. It's just odd being in the finance director's office and hearing pickleball under his floor and having kids registering, you know, while you're having public business going on, which is sometimes sensitive to the residents. So my guess is, you know, the cost analysis would have to be done to determine it. And like Ned said, rec is such a nice fit for that building. It's probably far more cost effective to renovate that to rec than build new. And selling it, finding that perfect tenant that will do, that wants the brew pub and can afford renovating it for that, that's, that may not be the easiest thing to do. Some of the thoughts there would be a demo with housing. You know, townhouse is there. They were looking for housing downtown. It's right on the water. It's a beautiful location, walkable to town, town. It's an easy demo. It's a brick building, boom, boom, most of it's open space. So those are the types of things that we bounced around with ideas. But the market would tell and the analysis would tell in a few years.
And in the report on Four West Main, and correct me if I'm wrong or if it's been updated, wasn't the final sort of recommendation demolition of that building because it's so unusable?
The real estate consultant did make that comment. I have to own up to that. I think that was a rather extreme.
Okay.
Comment. You know, because it would be tricky to renovate into housing, but it would be the sort of easiest renovation. You could retain some commercial on the ground floor. Again, it's like the, it's like the fire station. It's trying to find the function that's going to be the best and most economic fit.
Do you want to talk about the floors a little bit and the windows briefly?
Well.
Before you continue, I do want to hear that. I just want to, we have one hand up in the audience. Finish that thought, though, and I just want to make sure that person knows that I've recognized that they have their hand up and then we'll go there.
Yeah, well, we know from our test fit that the second floor in particular has a very low floor to ceiling height. And we were, we were trying to be creative in how you could inhabit that floor. But it's awkward, you know, because it ends up being like a storage floor in the middle of the building. The top floor, which is under the roof, doesn't have any windows. It has skylights, but no windows. So even if you were doing housing, you'd likely want to add some kind of doors. The biggest problem with that from a town hall point of view is it's a very small footprint on multiple floors. So it was very inefficient for a town function.
Thank you. All right, Amy Paretsky, your hand up. So I assume you have something to add. If you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, sure, thanks. I'm on a new computer, so I didn't know if it worked. But I'm at forty-seven Edie Meadow Drive. And one of the concerns I had was when you were talking about using the fire station as a rec center. Not that I'm against rec at all, but I was just wondering how many towns have a separate rec center with basketball and pickleball? I just remember when Lincoln Street was built, they had a separate gym off the back. I don't know if that's what they did in the end. But when they were selling it, they were saying, we want the gym separated off in the back so it can be used after hours and then people can't get into the school. And, you know, there's basketball at each school and there's basketball inside and outside and at all the parks. And I think I remember the fire station cost for renovation for a basketball was going to be eleven million dollars. So I was just kind of concerned if we're doing a whole new town hall and then we're going to pay another eleven million dollars for a rec center on top of it. That was my only concern. I was, well, that's not my only concern, but I was just wondering how many towns in Massachusetts have a separate rec center like that?
I couldn't give you an exact count. And we did a feasibility study for Sudbury that had a kind of combo rec center. They had a pool in theirs as well as council on aging, as well as school administration. So there are these kind of hybrid, looking around like I could see her, programs we're working with the town of Lincoln right now. In their case, their parks and rec department is being co-located with their COA and after-school programs on the middle school campus so they can utilize their recreation facilities.
Yeah, I mean, one idea, going back to the Lincoln Street concept that I guess was discussed was before my time, as we're about to start a feasibility on another school, you know, whether it would make any sense. And I suspect the school department might have some concerns about having it being used for non-school department activities, which is always a concern when that gets brought up. But it, you know, it might be worth walking through that discussion just to see what the cost, as well as the non-cost implications of that are.
Yeah, and it's something that the town and the school have to come to an agreement on. And in Lincoln's case, they're quite amenable to sharing.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
I have one more question.
Sure.
I'm not sure if I'm still on.
Yep, you're here.
No, I'm blanking on what I was going to say. Sorry.
That's all right.
I'll have to come back to you.
Yep, yep, that's fine. We've got a couple of other hands up, so we'll move it along. All right, thank you. All right, Laura, did you have something?
Oh, I was going to say that Lincoln is, we've been able to use Lincoln for events.
Okay.
In the gym, so just to clarify.
Maybe not as flexible as always open in the evenings kind of a thing. But that might be, that might be something that.
They are very easy for scheduling.
Yeah, it might be something worth.
It is set up, it is very separate. There's bathrooms and then the gym, and then there are doors that can be locked.
We've done a lot of scouting activities in winter there.
Okay, yep. Okay, next up in the audience, Fran Backstrom. Fran, if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hello, thank you very much. It's Fran Backstrom, seventy-six Cedar Hill Road. Like everyone else, Bill, I just want to thank you and your committee. I think you guys did a really great job with the task at hand. I did want to mention to Julianne, the Shrewsbury Library is a good example of an old building with a very modern addition that they're right in the middle of doing. And I think so was the Marlborough Library, if you wanted to take a look at something close by. I did want also, as Scott mentioned, I think we're premature in thinking about what we're going to do with rec because that assessment will be done when and if a new building was going to be completed. We've had six projects over in the last thirty years, four schools, a library and a senior center. And so the idea that we now have to look at town hall, fire station, possibly police station in the future or any other building, that's the. that's the business of Town Government. I mean, we're going to have to do this at some point. And while I don't think there's any reason for the Select Board to feel they have to make any decision this evening, you do have to at least make a decision that we, when we do renovate or move Town Hall facilities and services, that we have a place that we're committed to so that we can put the other pieces of property back on the tax roll, get them to be moneymakers for the Town. So while you don't have to do it, say, right now, this is what we're going to do, because it has to go through the financial planning process to see where in the capital project schedule it goes. I think Mitch, you're right. It is likely to go after another school and a fire station. But, so thinking about what kind of grants are available just is premature. We just need to say, okay, there was an emotional attachment to White Cliffs. The people wanted it saved. They wanted it saved for something that the town could use. They didn't want housing. So here's a perfect use for it that meets the emotional attachment to that building and that property that people have. And it also helps us increase and better the environment which our Town staff work in. So I do think you're going to have to make a decision about which property would be the option we move on without having to have any say right now in when that would happen.
Thanks, Fran. Next up, we have Patrick French. Patrick, if you could unmute, identify yourself. Let us know what's on your mind, please.
Hey, Patrick. Patrick French, 112 Cedar Hill Road. It, so this, I mean, I think this is pretty exciting. I'm looking forward to something getting done with White Cliffs, even if it is a good few years away. It sounds like, like I think Fran was saying, it sounds like there's, you know, we know what the next big capital projects are. So, and there's a lot, anytime anybody has any questions about this, about new Town Hall, about any of the projects, it's a big question. So is one of the things that can be done next is tasking somebody, I don't know if it's a Finance Board or who it would be, to sort of plan that out and just even if it's at a high level, like just get something that can be put in front of residents to say, here's what the next three capital projects look like over the next 10 years or 15 years or whatever the normal cadence would be. Just, and this is how we finance it and here's, you know, the impact to the taxpayer and how much taxes have to go up or not go up. And I know that's tricky to do probably the further you go out, but just, I do really strongly feel like we need something, a timeline, a concrete timeline that's subject to change, but that people can look at and get comfortable with because these projects have to happen. And we just need to provide information on how they're going to happen and when they're going to happen, as best we can. Is that something that can be acted on now or somebody can be tasked with doing next?
Yeah, we have a Financial Planning Committee. Their role and responsibility is to look at long-range capital plans. And they've already, I know, had at least some preliminary discussion on that with the Town's Finance Director. So I, you know, I anticipate that probably by the time we get to this fall's anticipated vote on the new fire station, that they will have already have looked not only at the long-term tax implications of the fire station, but at least of, you know, some possible next projects. We don't have any real scope yet on the Peaslee School and we only have this rough scope in terms of cost for Town Hall moving to White Cliffs. But they can begin to work with those numbers and start to plan that out. And I suspect that will drive some of the discussions and decisions on how long to bond projects for, to plan for when things might roll off and make sort of tax levels available for additional capital projects.
Thanks.
Sure, thanks, Patrick. Okay, and we have Amy Peretzky for a second time. Amy, you don't need to identify yourself. We know who you are.
Okay, thanks. I was just wondering, since we're talking that it's years away that Town Hall's going to happen, I was wondering if you could not make any decision until residents have weighed in more? Because this probably has to go to Town Meeting and out for a ballot vote, similar to Fire Station.
Sure.
Is that true?
Oh, yeah, any large construction project, any large capital project would certainly need to go to Town Meeting and most likely to a ballot vote. And that would occur at some point in the future. So process has been, for prior projects, has been, first you have a Town Meeting article to appropriate some money to form a feasibility study committee. And to some extent, we've already done that, but I suspect that by the time we start this in earnest, we would probably need another one. They would hire an architect, could be Icon, could be somebody else, to really start to look at the details. Icon's job was not to design Town Hall at White Cliffs. It was to look conceptually, where should it be? That's been answered, and then the next phase would be really doing some design work at the conclusion of that. So that would be one Town Meeting vote. And then at the conclusion of that process, there would likely be a second Town Meeting vote for actual construction dollars. That's been the process.
Just wondering.
Yeah, sure.
If there could be like a non-binding vote, you know, maybe at the fall Town Meeting? Or a survey that goes out to the residents that says, you know, these are our four options and which would you choose? Just to get input, because I'm just thinking, if the Board of Selectmen makes a decision tonight that this is the road we're going to go down? And then disperses of some of the buildings? And then you have like residents or the town deciding, well, that's not the direction we wanted to go in. I don't know if that would happen. But if it did happen, it'd be like there would be no way to go back. So I was just wondering.
Sure.
I thank the committee for all the work that they did, but should there be a little more public input?
So the Town Office's feasibility study committee, you know, had a public, I mean, they had a number of public meetings, but they had one particular public input session near the end where a lot of this was described in detail and a number of people offered their thoughts. I think that's really the right process. You know, just doing a Town Survey without context to make substantive decisions doesn't always lead to, you know, the most thought-provoking result, if you will. I think what this committee did with its experts was a really good process.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you, Amy. And we have Laura, Amy's hand, and Fran for a second time. Fran, hi again. What's on your mind?
Hi, Fran Backstrom, 76 Cedar Hill Road. I'm just going to, no surprise, say just the opposite of what Amy just said. At some point, the five elected members of the Select Board have to make a decision on behalf of the Town in the best way they feel possible. That's why they are elected. We can't continue to go back to the people to get input because it's always going to be, you're never going to please everyone. And one night, you can have 100 people show up who say, "We want housing, affordable housing attached to White Cliffs with the community center." And then a month later, you're going to have 500 people say, "We want Town Hall at Four West Main." I want the five of you with the information that you have from the Boards, Committees, Commissions and Town Staff to make a leadership decision on what path we should go. I don't think it has to be done tonight. I think you need to actually, you know, digest the information that was given to you this evening, go back over their meetings, go back over the study, but come to a decision. And yes, then get, unload some of the buildings that are not making any money for the Town for the benefit of the community. It doesn't have to be easy, but it still has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Mitch, if I might say something?
Sure.
You know, when they put together this committee, I sort of felt like the odd man out because we had a real estate agent on there, we had an attorney on there, we had an architect already on the committee, right? We have this great wealth of knowledge in Town already of people who are willing to help. Those people came in, they gave their expertise to this committee, along with Icon and their expertise in this type of building. So I want to make sure this wasn't just, you know, six people getting together and doing this, right? This committee was picked specifically for this type of job. And kudos to, you know, the administration at the time who picked these people because, you know, they were the best cream of the crop from the Town who could actually go through all of this information very quickly with a lot of thought, with a lot of effort, and be able to gather and put all of this together and come up with these recommendations.
Bill, do you want to describe a little bit the public outreach that the committee went through? We had public comments at our meetings.
We had public comments. I made sure, I took Mitch's lead and made sure that we had public comment at every meeting. And then the public input session was actually quite interesting because, you know, up until then, the biggest downside to White Cliffs was the cost, right? Everyone thought it was going to be the most expensive thing. And even with that, before we even had the cost knowledge, people were coming out to the public meetings saying, no, we like the idea of White Cliffs. And I think that turned a lot of votes on our committee. We had a lot of people come in during the meetings, make phone calls in to make suggestions of, you know, things we should look at. I do know that our real estate agent really hounded Icon for the real estate information from all of the buildings and made sure that we had that. We actually postponed the final vote twice because we didn't have that information. We made sure we had all of the information we needed at the time before we made this recommendation.
Question.
Yeah.
In the sort of review of the requirements, what is the sort of current, and I guess I should maybe know this, but, you know, current headcount at Town Hall? And then what was the projected headcount into the future that you'd have to build for, right? Because you'd be building to flex for more employees at some point in the future. And sort of what was that?
I can probably answer that best, Mike. So a meeting was conducted between the administration, Icon, and each department head. The discussion was what does the staffing look like today and what does it look like going forward? As Ned indicated, there was a very modest request by the staff. There was a few additional positions that we saw on the far horizon. Economic Development Coordinator would be one of them. Those types of positions to be added. The Family Youth Services, combining with Health, to be Health and Human Services, were quite a bit of discussion about that. They have a lot of positions that are grant-funded. There are horizons on some of those grants. Some of the horizons are 20 years out. But that may be, you know, five years left when it comes to what's going on here. So there's a lot of balancing on where we thought the staffing was going to be. There wasn't a lot of additional staff. There really wasn't. There was a thought about separating Assistant Town Administrator and the Director of...
Human Resources.
Human Resources, thank you. So there were discussions about that. 10, 20 years later, are we going to do those things? So there was some flex space that was put in there for that. So, yeah, there was a pretty detailed dive, but, you know, there was no DPW. I want two assistants and two more of these and three more of those.
Sure.
So it was vetted well with the administrative staff.
Okay. Do you know the number offhand, sort of where we're at now?
I want to say four, you know, overall. It wasn't a lot.
Do you know how many people currently actively work for the Town in this building?
I don't. I don't. I don't. It was a very modest, modest, less than 10% increase. There was a discussion about maybe pushing, putting DPW over at the Highway Garage to free up some floor space. And we said, well, that's a good future project. In the event, there's an expansion and there's a new department. Who knows? Maybe it's a sustainability department. DPW's offices could be relocated to DPW Garage.
Okay. And then did the projections of the space that you need and how big the building would have to be, did that factor in, right? The current, say, foot traffic the building gets now versus requests via phone or email or online?
Yes.
And the projection that that would maybe be, you know, you probably have less foot traffic into the future and maybe more of a, you know, a space geared towards that as opposed to people walking into Town Hall?
Yes, yeah, although the amount of foot traffic is a highly sort of local
Sure.
condition. And every Town Hall we've done has a slightly different approach to it. So this one, we really felt like was going to remain fairly stable in that regard. The big one is storage and how storage is handled moving into the future. And we spend an inordinate amount of time talking about storage because...
Regarding document storage mostly?
Document storage. It's expensive space. And so understanding what the state's requirements are for maintaining documents, how long, frequency of access, whether they can go into a long-term storage situation versus onsite storage. And what we try to encourage is thinking in terms of the future and diminishing requirements for onsite storage as opposed to even an offsite, cheaper storage facility. But it is, that's probably one of the single biggest impacts that you can have.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Julianne?
So in a month or two, we're going to meet with the Financial Planning Committee and Appropriations. Is this a topic that we could really like figure out the timeline as some of our...
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I mean, Tim, of course, is on the call and on the meeting, and he works regularly with financial planning and with Finance Director. So, I mean, I know that they are already working on this, but we can talk a little bit more about this. I don't know how accurate their crystal ball is and how well they can even work on things right now, but they could at least say, take your number, escalate it to some future guest date and say, okay, what will this look like now relative to the projected debt for the fire station, which is becoming, you know, as you get closer, you get more real numbers. Fire Station is becoming a real project with real numbers. Peaslee is much more hazy. I'd say at this moment, even hazier than this one because they haven't done anything yet, just starting. But they could maybe take the Lincoln Street School project and escalate that as an example to plug in. And they could start plugging those things in and seeing what things look like.
Okay, and one piece of information I think the Town would appreciate, I think we would all appreciate is if it goes to White Cliffs, this building in Four West Main being used for housing, how many housing units would this building reasonably accommodate? And same with Four West Main.
Anna, can you, is that information you would have at your fingertips? It's in the report.
I think it is in the material. That's even on the committee's webpage, section of the Town webpage, yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking to see it.
Also included the number of potential residential units at the fire station location. The consultant developed that as a means to determine what the value of the building may be to a prospective developer or homeowner.
Yeah, I don't think it was in the executive summary. It was in the detailed one.
It's in the detail.
That's where the devil is.
Yeah, it's not uncommon for old schools to be repurposed for housing.
Yeah, I suspect that would be the easiest transformation of this building.
Well, and the developer gets tax credits for adapting.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Bill, thank you. You've already been thanked, but I will thank you again to you and your committee for all the work and all the staff in this building that aided your committee's work. It was a big overall effort.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. I think that concludes this item.
Thank you.
So what is our timeline with this now?
Well, I mean, for us, I mean, there's no formal decision because there's no financial or otherwise action to... or otherwise action to take on moving Town Hall to White Cliffs. But in theory, we make actions by recognizing this and, for example, looking for other uses for 4 West Main.
Right. And I think this is probably a good topic for our July 29 workshop.
Mm-hmm.
Right, sort of.
How to, how to go about doing that. And once, you know, once we have Town Approval on the fire station, then that triggers the serious need to look at, okay, you know, what is, what are the Town, what we're going to do for the existing fire station? I will say, I'll not be part of that discussion because I live too close to that to be formally part of that. But everyone else will have a discussion about that.
If you can throw a rock, you have to stay.
I'd have to have a really good arm to throw a rock across that pond, but-
Give me a five iron.
Just don't send me the bill if I break a window. Yeah, but there, there is no, there's no action required on the report provided.
Right.
I'm just struggling with the cost though. It's so hard. And then to look at how many buildings we've done and the point that Fran made to do 60, and now we've got like three really big ones.
We, we as a Town took a break, maybe, maybe a little bit too long of a break from construction. Particularly the fire station project, the Town started that process well before COVID.
Yeah.
And really should have been concluded five years ago.
Right. And, and some of the properties we're talking about, right, Levin Pierce, I mean, that building was built and acquired in the 1970s. So it's not a recent purchase. It's not like the Town put a large amount of money out. Same thing with 4 West.
Yeah.
We got that for a relatively low cost. So, yeah, we do have all these buildings, but we don't have necessarily a lot of money.
Yeah, no, it's more of the projects. It's a lot of big projects.
We want to make them profitable and productive.
Yeah, we have, you know, rough, rough guess about 10 municipal and school buildings of reasonable size that are under our, our management, are under our responsibility. You know, if each of those buildings is designed to last, say, 25 to 30 years between major renovations or replacements, which is about normal, I mean, you try to get 40 or 50 years total with a big renovation somewhere in the middle, every few years, we're going to be doing one of them.
Right.
And that's just how it is. And unfortunately, construction has really inflated substantially.
Yeah, thank you.
Kind of where it is. Okay. With that item, we have next up on our agenda, vote to accept an easement from WCD Garage for a sewer pump station located at 44 West Main Street, Northborough, and sign the acceptance related thereto. Tim, do you want to guide us through this?
Actually, I sent the plan over earlier. Scott had sent to me earlier last night. I sent the document itself for this 13 Church Street. But Scott can speak the plan as well.
Sure.
Be more effective.
Happy to, Mr. Chairman. So you all have the 11 by 17 easement plan? I did send out an aged memorandum. I'm not sure if the board received that as well. It was dated February 24th.
I think we saw, we saw something by email not long before the meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was this afternoon. So easement is right behind, it's WCD Garage, 44 West Main Street. The sewer pump station is right between 13 Church Street, which is the old fire station, and Cold Brook Stream, Cold Harbor Stream. The pump station was constructed partially on the property of WCD Garage, 44 West Main Street. There is, there was a very challenging deed research by our survey consultant in order to determine where the property lines are. That's because of the age of Main Street and Church Street. There's a little stone there in front of CVS that marks George Washington's passing through. That's how old those streets are. So over the years, property lines got hazy and the surveyor actually had to go to the registry themselves and pull out some of the old linens and determine exactly where the property lines are. What you see before you is where they are. There is an encroachment on the abutting property. We've been working with the owner of WCD Garage for a couple of years now, coming to an agreement on them granting us the easement for the pump station to be present on their property. This went to Town Meeting in '23. Under Article 16, the Town approved us receiving, accepting that easement. In exchange for the easement, there was some form of compensation provided to the abutter. The Water Sewer Commission granted a waiver for a sewer betterment charge for them to connect. So they were, they have, they're on septic system. They were unable to connect the sewer. It's on the other side of Route, not, of Route 20. Very costly to go there. Well, there's a sewer pump station in his backyard. So he was able to connect. Opens up more of his property for use because there won't be a septic system there anymore. A memorandum of understanding was signed by both parties indicating that, yes, you'll give us the easement. Great, we'll give you the betterment and we're done. The easement documentation, it was prepared in draft form by the surveyor, sent over to Town Council. Town Council polished it up, went over to WCD Garage. They sent it to their attorney as well as their mortgage holder, Vidia Bank. They got back to us with comments. It's been finalized. It's been signed by the owner of WCD Garage. And now the last step is for this board to sign the easement to accept it.
Great. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Did you say that there was something sent this afternoon, documentation?
It was an old memorandum I prepared, prepared for John Codere.
I don't know if I saw that. I'm sorry, I was just checking.
I don't remember who from the office sent it.
I did see this document was sent, but I didn't see the memo.
It gives you the, the history indicating that-
Can I just look at that?
Yep, yep.
And do we have to actually physically sign it this evening?
We'll, we'll keep it in the administration office and you can sign it when, when you have the time.
So did, you didn't get anything, I don't think, right?
I'm looking through my emails.
Was there anything in the memorandum, Scott, that you didn't just cover?
No, it just has some specific dates indicating that, you know, we, we delved, delved further into the property line in response to an inquiry from the RFP that went on the street for the sale of 13 Church Street. The timeline that we went with the surveyor, when the final drawing was developed, and the memorandum of, of understanding with the abutter. I've summarized it in general terms. The specific dates I didn't include, but they're in the memorandum.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I see, so Tim sent me and other, and folks in the office, the easement document, but I don't think there was a history with that and it was not sent to the full board.
Okay.
So, so we haven't seen that, but I, I think you described the history as detailed as I know it.
And the only difference is I didn't provide the dates. They're in the memorandum. And it was prepared in advance of the Town Meeting, Calendar 23 for the article.
Yeah, I remember, I remember seeing things then. And as you said-
Could we get a copy of that anyway?
Yes, we'll, we'll certainly have it emailed out.
Thanks. You want to see it? I sent it to you, please. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll forward out to the rest of the board the information that Tim had sent me, which just contains the easement deed. Contain the memo that was referred to.
And so just to confirm now, tonight, we're accepting, so it has WCD connected to the sewer? Will that happen after?
They've connected.
So this is just recognizing that all these steps have happened?
Yes.
Got it.
We've all complied with the requirements of the memorandum.
Got it.
We got our Town Meeting approval. They made a sewer connection. All we need to do is sign off and we can exist where we existed for 20, 30 years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So at some point in the past, some predecessor of yours or of all of ours thought this was Town property or, or got a, an informal handshake deal or something like, whatever happened in the past, it looks like we built the, the station half on old fire station property and half on WCD property.
Maybe traded some oil changes or something.
We made, we made an oops.
Yes, exactly. And now we're correcting it.
And it's been something that we've been talking about for a while, but thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Lisa.
Does this have any effect on the, on the PNS that's already been signed or if it's been signed?
It, it does not. If you look at the easement plan, it has two easements on it. One is identified as easement A, which is the one we're discussing tonight for WCD Garage, 44 West Main Street. And then there's easement, easement B, which is the front easement for 13 Church Street. So part of the conveyance of 13 Church Street to the Town included an access easement for, for us to get to our pump station. We didn't have to have an easement before.
Everybody knew that too, Scott, going in. All parties knew that.
Yes.
Right. But that, I mean, that's included in the, in the documentation anyway, isn't it?
Yeah, that was part, that was part of the RFP. That, that, that's what prompted the questions during the RFP process, and it is part of the purchase and sale, that, that easement is part of the plan transfer.
So are there two easements now? Easement, easement A and easement B?
Yeah, the easement A is for WCD Garage. That's what we're discussing now.
Got it, yep.
And then the front easement is for our staff to get to the pump station.
Okay.
And for half of the pump station to exist on what will no, no longer be Town Property. It'll be owned by the, the future developer of 13 Church Street.
Okay.
How often do you have to access that pump station?
Daily.
Daily?
65 days a year, yes.
Wow.
Every, every pump station, every water tank, every water station gets observed every day.
So, so that just means a person goes onsite, not equipment and-
Oh, you know, we go in there with a truck and the crane and, and equipment and, yep, yep. We go through it and make sure the bearings are running good and the wet wells operating and the level, level transducers are operating correctly and we log it all in.
Yep.
Wow.
How many pump stations do we have in the Town?
We have seven municipal pump stations. There are two private ones, but seven municipals.
Okay. Thanks. Any, any other questions on the easement? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, okay, that's me. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to accept an easement from WCD Garage Incorporated for a sewer pump station located at 44 West Main Street, Northborough, and sign the acceptance related thereto.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You didn't have family here to-
Okay, no, that's good. And you have what we need to sign with you or?
I'm going to get it to die.
Okay, perfect. And so they'll let us know when it's here.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Next up, we have Continued ARPA Funding Discussion Board Member Input. So at our last meeting, we agreed that, that we would think about roughly, roughly $1.6, $1.7 million of ARPA remaining and, and how that might be allocated. So we agreed that we would each provide two shopping lists, if you will, idea lists, one for $320,000 each, which is the 1.6 million divided by five. And I forget who made the discussion, but also a million dollar shopping list. Obviously, we don't have $5 million, so we couldn't all do them, but, you know, maybe to see where there might be overlap in discussions. So I asked Angie to be the conduit for that. So once Angie received all five, including mine, which I sent to her, she then forwarded them to me and I just put them into one large spreadsheet, which I sent out to everyone earlier today. We don't have printouts of that with us. If we want to go through it, I can share my screen.
Yes, great.
Want me to do that? Okay. Let me see, maybe I'll-
Transparency, I do have a copy that I made highlights.
You weren't very well prepared, Mike. Thank you.
Select board, huh? I mean, so I'm sorry, make a copy. I don't know if we can get back in.
Yeah, let's, let's-
It'll be good for the people who are watching too, to have it up on-
All right, so let's see.
Forgot we have an audience.
Screen, the big green button, okay. Yeah, it looks right, but it looks really small. See, did that, okay. Doing my best to make this readable. A little bit. All right, that's probably about the best I can do. So I'm first only because I just added everyone else's to the bottom of, of the same spreadsheet that I started with this. So there's a column on the left, which is amount $320,000. Each person's totals added up to 320 or a little bit less. Lisa did not provide dollar figures, but that's okay. She provided some items. And then the second column is, is amount, $1 million. And again, the same thing, each person's list in that million dollar column added up to a million or just shy of that. And, and these other columns over on the right here, which I won't share in the entirety, are just summations of each of those, just to sort of prove the numbers. Then there's sums at the bottom, just to confirm that I did it right. So do we want to each go through and quickly, briefly talk about each of the, each of the items? We're not, this is a discussion only, so we're not voting on any appropriations tonight. But I think it's important for us to, to further the discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a good idea. One thing, and I don't know when we want to maybe pull Tim in on this, just if he has any feedback or, or anything on sort of what, because, right, we're, we're on a time crunch.
Yeah.
Right? And there, and the Town, you know, you can only do so much stuff at once, depending on how long that laundry list is. So I don't know if, if, Tim, if you had any guidance or feedback on sort of what maybe in general more doable or-
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that I think that what you're saying is important. Tim saw this at the same time everybody else did. So my guess is he has not looked through and decided, oh, this is, this is feasible, this is not feasible or anything like that. Is maybe he can, he'll have, he now has the list and he can hear the discussion tonight and understand a little bit more. Somebody, you know, he might see, you know, historical society. What is, what does that mean? He might not be aware of the details of that, but hear the discussion and then, and then he can get back to either individual members or the board as a whole and say, yeah, this one, we really can't do it. Or Jason Little may have something like, there might be a legal reason having to do with procurement, that we just can't do something.
Sure, I agree, so.
Yeah. Okay, does that make sense?
I think that's great.
Okay.
Well, I, I have a little bit of a-
Sure.
-objection to moving forward so quickly.
Okay.
I, when I looked at this, several of us once asked for sidewalks.
Yeah.
Had sidewalks on our list.
Yeah.
So Scott, since, since you're still here.
Yes.
Is, is it reasonable to assume that we could, like, what sidewalks could we get done by the deadline?
We'd only need to contract, all right, I'll, I'm sorry, I'll let you, I'll let you answer.
The, the time is now to engage a design engineer, right now. We have two design engineers that were procured in accordance with federal procurement law. They're currently under task order contracts with us. We did that in support of our SCADA earmark in order for them to, us to work with one of them. SCADA earmark is through the federal government's EPA grant program. So we would engage one of those consultants nearly immediately to get moving on sidewalk design. Sidewalk design will likely, depending on how complicated it is, could take several months. So we're sitting here basically almost in July, so July, August, September, October. We bid it out in November, hopefully get a contractor on board in December because by that time, that's when we need to have contracts signed, I believe?
Yeah, the contract would need to be signed, would be in place.
Yep, by the end of this calendar year.
Yeah.
So now would be the time. There are certain projects, sidewalk projects that are far more complicated than others. For example, Maple Street. I know that's been on the list for a long time. That's a very complicated sidewalk project. There is no closed drainage there. There's an aqueduct crossing. There are utility poles in the way. And there's likely going to be need for easements. If there is need for easements, we would have to get memorandums of agreement and rights of entry at a minimum from all the property owners in hopes that we can get the easements accepted at October Town Meeting. I don't even know if that's feasible time-wise. That would be very fast to negotiate with 20 residents possibly. Other sidewalks, like Allen Street, much easier. Allen Street's got a good slope. It's got a curb in. We've already, I already met with the residents on- We've already, I already met with the residents on Allen Street that require easements. We have easement drawings done for those in anticipation of a sidewalk. That one is pretty simple to do. That could be done quickly. Some of the downtown ones, um, I don't think are very complicated. There's a lot of closed drainage in downtown. I believe there was, uh, we were talking about, um, a little small gap between, uh, Center, Center Drive and, um, Cumberland Farms. That's a pretty easy one to put in there. I don't believe we need an easement, we could talk to the church. I think their parking lot is the only area where there wouldn't be right-of-way access, but that's a simple, um, memorandum of agreement and then we can get an easement later if we need it. The, um, there's another, a gap I know we have on, um, Davis between Indian Meadow and Lanthorn. There is closed drainage there. The challenge there are the lawns, the lawns are dead flat. So, the lawns currently slope from the front of the house down toward the road at next to, you know, less than a one percent slope. We're gonna put a six-inch wall in front of their, in front of their lawns by putting curbs and sidewalks in. Now they have puddles, so now you gotta manage that drainage, it could be challenging. Some of the other ones around downtown, I know one of the priorities was to replace the sidewalks between Main Street and Gale. Those cement concrete sidewalks, they're in poor condition. I know that was identified on the Complete Streets survey as a need. There might be an easy mechanism to extend the sidewalk up Monroe and around the corner on Gale to kind of get that loop in there. I know that was one of the desires, to connect pedestrian, um, parking at Assavet to the Town Committee Downtown. That would be a viable one. But it's, the time's now.
Today.
Well, our agenda says discussion, so we can't appropriate money.
No, I, I know one thing with, with ARPA funds, some of the guidance did say, right, if there's existing or other grants or monies available for something, that maybe that's not the best use of ARPA funds. So, has the town previously gotten or applied for, um, I forget the exact names of these grants, but grant, because I feel like I hear sidewalks a lot.
We have, we have complete streets, which is in process. Complete streets is primarily for downtown adjacent sidewalks.
We discussed the, the complete streets use, uh, so the complete streets program is a mass DOT program here, a half a million dollar grant. Doesn't do a lot of construction for sidewalks, but downtown it could get a lot done. Discussions with the planning director, um, and the ARPA funding for the downtown revitalization design initiative. The anticipation was, the first piece of that could be quickly implemented with complete streets funds. They provide funding for multimodal transportation, bike lanes, things like that, crosswalk enhancements, sidewalk construction, pedestrian scale, safety improvements, lighting and things like that. So, I understand that that was the goal for that, and there was no horizon on using complete streets. So, if there's other resources to get done quickly, like ARPA, that, that's a viable alternative.
Is there a rough cost per foot of sidewalk? No.
No, I mean, it really isn't. I know cement, concrete, flatwork is about seventy dollars a square foot. But that doesn't, that, that's just a piece of concrete sitting somewhere. You know, the drainers, the easements, the driveway access, front lawns, I mean, believe it or not, that's the simplest little thing, but, you know, with this big puddle in your front lawn, you just raise the gutter line by six inches. You know, when we overlay a road, your driveway lip is now an inch higher, and all of a sudden you get a puddle in your driveway. So, it's, it's a, it's a challenge, and it's a design challenge.
If this helps in the complete streets at the Allen Street sidewalk project, was it range from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand? Do the prices for sidewalks change the way buildings' costs are changing?
No.
Or is that still the range?
No, that's, that's reasonable. I mean, these, these numbers in the complete streets prioritization plan are incredibly, uh, preliminary. They were based on, like, Google imagery and, and ideas on how much it would cost. They talked to us, you know, how's, how's Maple Street look? Well, there's no drainage, it got some issues, there was utility poles. What about Allen Street? That's good slope, we planned on it before. But no, no, the, the cost for construction prevailing wages impacted, obviously.
Yeah.
And then the cost of oil. So asphalt's stabilized a bit, so it's not a, it hasn't changed much.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just going through, you can actually probably see what I'm highlighting here, I'm just looking to see the different sidewalks. We have, um, just as far as sidewalks for the, for the three twenty, which I'll just, just all focus on at the moment, because we could make a decision.
Yeah, as you're doing that, Mitch, I guess my only, obviously, yes, there's a sidewalk need. I, I guess my hesitation was that the monies that's left is gonna, would get eaten up rather quickly on sidewalks, on concrete. And I think there's, and I, and you know, there may be limitations on how much stuff we can, we can get. But, you know, are there other worthwhile things that we could get and we can get quickly for the cost of, of putting down? Maybe not, you know, Allen Street, you know, that could range up to five hundred thousand dollars, as, as you said. That's a big chunk of the money gone. You know, um, that, that could be used elsewhere. You know, when I kind of, or the way I approached it was kind of thinking, you know, where'd these funds come from? These funds came out of, out of COVID, out of the pandemic. You know, when I kind of think, and I know there's ARPA guidance on how it should be used, but with that in mind, and then thinking, you know, who was most affected or, or had to, to, working through the pandemic, right? There are school kids. Now, we do spend a lot of money on schools, um, most of our budget's on schools, and we've already done ARPA funding for schools. But, you know, you can make an argument that schoolchildren were really affected by the pandemic for the, for the worse. Police and fire couldn't work remotely. Those guys and gals had to show up, no matter what the issue was, you know, how sick the person was, they had to show up and they had to help. Now, so you can kind of see that in my allocations. I don't, you know, put it all towards those groups. You know, I do kind of try to spread it out and try and do the most good with the monies that we had to allocate. But that was sort of my overall thinking when, when approaching it, just to kind of.
So I, so I do want, I do want us to go through, and I'll show each person's on the screen and let, let that person, that member, describe what they were thinking, so everybody knows. Just, I mean, just on the sidewalks, I took a quick look, and Julianne, you were right, if sidewalks were, were mentioned, I think in almost everybody's list. One way or the, one way or another, so Scott.
Just, just really quickly on, on the sidewalk component, um, it would take some diligent, due diligence on my part and the design engineer's part to determine what sidewalks would be a viable design approach that would meet the timeline. I would hate for the, for the board to commit X dollars toward sidewalk B, and then me come back here in October and say, sorry, it's not gonna work. Then you're scrambling. So there are risks. And, you know, that's, that, I was being facetious, not, not right now, but the, action would be needed rapidly if we wanted to move forward with design.
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and that's why I'm trying to establish, like, like, which of these projects would be the most successful to get done by the timeline? By December, we have to have the contractor in place, but it has to be done by, the sidewalk has to be in by twenty twenty-six.
And that would be the case. I, in the event that the, the board chose, let's go forward with some sidewalks, I would sit down with the planning director and a design engineer and look through the sidewalks that are on the list. Which ones can very, very reasonably be considered capable of being done by the end of this year, contractually? And then come back to the board and say, it's only these two or three, or take your pick. And it would not be the latter.
So the two choices that I had were Maple Street and Allen Street? And since you took Maple off the table for, you know, understandable reasons, and it sounded like Allen did have a lot of the preliminary work done, which I like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, you, I'll, I'll shock your surprise, and you put three hundred and nineteen or three hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards the Allen Street sidewalk. So, yeah, so you, you know, you may have enough. If, if we allocate based on that three twenty rule, there might be enough to do Allen Street, maybe.
Yeah, my, my recommendation would be to, to do the slam dunks, the easy ones.
I like that.
I would hate for it to fall through the cracks and then you're scrambling in November on what to spend money on.
Okay.
You may have mentioned this already, but that little strip on Hudson Street? Is that a slam dunk?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep, that's a good one.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right, um, I'll.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll go, I'll go last. So we'll just go otherwise in order here. Laura, do you want to, you, you have three items.
Sure.
You're, you're the easiest, thank you.
I, so when I was trying to decide how to, you know, really go about the money, I wanted to look at ways that we had heard, so we've heard a lot of feedback from the community about the need for sidewalks. I was thinking financially, if we were to invest in sidewalks, it was something that would benefit the entire community, and it would be a way to help, you know, eliminate some of the tax burden from this type of a project by using ARPA money. And so that's why sidewalks really took, you know, this is, this was something that's been on my mind for a while, and it's been on the mind of the community. And then, so that's where my sidewalk thoughts came from. And then for the town meeting signs, we had talked about ways to raise better awareness. So Mitch and I were discussing doing reusable town meeting signs that we could post around town before a town meeting to have something that we could reuse on an annual basis, so that the community would know when that is coming up, if you want to add clarification to it.
Yeah, so I, I had the same, the same thought, so I went to some random sign vendor just to get an approximate price. I forget how many signs I said, let's say we bought fifty of the corrugated plastic signs that can be used year after year after year. We wouldn't have a date on there, but we'd have a blank space and maybe we'd order stickers every year for that. And it would just say, you know, town meeting, and then we'd we put out, I don't know, around ten, around municipal buildings. You know, I would be happy to host one at my house, I'll bet most of us would. You know, those involved in town meetings, spreading it around a little bit. Getting fifty instead of ten. And of course, with signs like that, the first one is the most expensive. And getting a bunch more isn't that, isn't that much more. So I, I came up with five or six hundred bucks as, as sort of a max cost for that. And, um, and I forget which one of us, but we agreed, we would sort of share that. So I have three hundred dollars under mine and Laura has three hundred dollars under hers, um, is how that came about.
And that was really, I mean, that was my methodology, I'm looking forward to hearing what the rest of the board has to share. Oh, wait a minute, I think I had something else on there. I had, I thought I had recodification on my list. Was that not in there?
It is possible that I messed that up.
That's okay, I can tell you really quickly why.
Yeah.
I wanted to.
Be able to spend all our money.
Yeah, yeah, that's tru, well, yeah, you're, Laura is spending in the five, she's spending it all.
Yeah, so.
Somebody else had, I had recodification, I think, and I think somebody else did, I don't remember.
I did as well.
Uh, Julianne, you've got recodification.
And I had it down at the bottom.
Okay.
I think we liked that one because it was chief compared to everything.
I think.
It's a nerdy one that I like.
So this was part of my three hundred K project list.
Okay.
And the reason I thought charter recodification, that, the total for that was seventeen thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. And I think this would also benefit the entire community, because it is the governing document for our town. We've made several charter changes since our last recodification in nineteen ninety-six. And by updating this document, it would make it easier for everyone to be on the same page. The benefits would include more clarity around the language, it would hold up better from a legal perspective, and it would ensure more consistency and transparency for the board to help us, you know, adhere to the laws and to help make decisions. And last, it would make it easier for the residents to understand how our town operates. And that was some, you know, and that was the last comment I wanted to make.
Okay, good, I apologize if I missed that, but did you also have three nineteen for the Allen Street sidewalk? I'm trying to think of.
For Allen Street sidewalk, I had a range of two hundred and fifty to five hundred.
Okay, so I probably, I probably missed the recodification, and to make the formula work, I, I probably put it in as three nineteen.
No problem.
Okay.
That sounds great, thank you though.
But a number of us have recodification, so I will update the spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Just to, to clarify that. Julianne, you're up next.
Okay, so, so my, my goal with my request was that, as we listened to the residents, there was, there were a lot of comments about coming out of the pandemic and concerns about mental health. And I think we've done a good job with the Health and Human Services Department now in that respect. But I think we all know that getting outside and being able to enjoy nature is, is another benefit, uh, you know, to mental health. So, I'm advocating for Lori Connors's Treescape program. And all she's asking for is twenty-five thousand dollars. And my second thing was, it's, there were, there were a lot of requests also to give money to boards and committees. And I thought maybe a, a good way to do that is just to set aside a chunk of money, fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars, whatever it is, where we could set up a little grant program and boards and committees could come, you know, say, these are our projects, we'd like this much money, and deal with it that way. I thought that was a, you know, a fair way to, to, to give money to boards and committees. So my next one is EV chargers. You know, I, I was kind of making up money here, because I thought that those might come, at one point, they were offered for free, weren't they?
They still are.
They still are.
So, um, yeah, the state still has a, a grant program of, I believe, up to fifty thou, I think it's up to fifty thousand dollars per street address for municipal EV chargers. We've been looking at that for the fire station project. And so we could do several that shouldn't be any cost at all to the town.
Oh, okay, so I have a lot of money to spend, so we can take that off. And then the immediate facilities repairs, I just thought that that made a lot of sense. And then I kind of lumped in sidewalks, crosswalks, better, like, street outlining on those tricky intersections of Patty Lane and Pier Street. So that was my biggest chunk of money. And then I did, when, in my million dollar column, I did like Tim's suggestions of the investment grade audit, the archive project, town recodification. And by the way, we haven't done recodification in many years, to add to your list. And then, because my million dollar list came to nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, I had a thousand dollars to put towards town beautification.
Excellent, thank you.
Now I have an extra seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, well, we'll revise, that's okay. Lisa, do you want to, uh, I'm sorry, Scott, did you have something?
Do we want to wait till the end for responses or questions or anything?
Uh, maybe wait, maybe wait till the end, if you don't mind. Okay.
Thank you.
Lisa, you want to walk through yours?
Yeah, I, I didn't have prices, because when I did look at things earlier, um, they had changed quite a bit. But I put road paint, being probably the, the least expensive thing of my, my want list, because I think we really need some road paint in several places. And I think I talked about doing crosswalks that would be painted, not just from the edges, but from the centers as well. And maybe do a little something with the schools. We, I've heard that they are now doing little designs, like children's stick figures or something by the schools to make people more aware, there might be children in the crosswalks. Would love to see some of that paint used at making Blake Street's parking lot to show where the parking areas are. Because while we still don't sign it, we should sign it and paint it, no matter what happens down there, it's still a parking lot and should be used as a parking lot, and people should see a sign that says, "Public Parking," with an arrow right to Blake Street. I'd like to see.
Which, which one, which one was that, is that part of the road paint, Lisa?
Yes, yes, it's all under road paint.
Gotcha, okay.
Because it's, it's paint. It doesn't take an awful lot to do anything else, but maybe get the design work and paint. Next is the raised crosswalk speed humps roadway scoring. There's areas of town that during the Traffic Safety Committee, there's a lot of discussion on, things of this nature. And, uh, raised crosswalks is more popular now than it's ever been before, and it's in many towns. I think using it by the school areas is a good idea. I think areas that are being used, that are neighborhoods that are being used for cut-throughs would be a very good place to have some, because we're forgetting that people are driving through neighborhoods and they just want to get to their destination. And Maple Street alone, I've seen people pass right in front of my house, somebody else who's on the road. So WL line doesn't really work very well. And I think that protection and giving people a little bit more to feel comfortable about would be a good thing to do. The rapid rectangular flashing beacons were also requested during the traffic safety, and I think they have at least seven places, I think seven or eight, that were discussed. I'm sure we could probably get a few more. Sidewalks have been the thing people have asked for, for decades. Sidewalk, sidewalks. I would be happy to say Allen Street, just to get a sidewalk done. I don't even know when the last one was brand new and put together. But I would go along with Allen Street to at least start and maybe the one on Hudson Street. And this was a, a thought that I had quite a long time ago when I did talk to IT Bob about it, as a matter of fact, was to get the underground wiring done downtown. It helps with the downtown beautification. It makes the areas less vulnerable to the weather. He had told me at one point it was a million dollars a mile. So I said, if you had a mile, what would the mile be? And I recommended Summer Street down to Monroe Street, thinking if that was the mile, that would be a good place to have it. And finally, the decorative streetlights that many of the towns are moving toward, the black ones that would hold plants and banners to decorate that one mile and help start the ball rolling on giving us a nicer look in downtown.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa. Mike, you're up.
Sure. I know I kind of went ahead and jumped the gun a little bit earlier. But so you kind of already know some of my thinking and coming up with, with, with the items on my list. You know, there's the, you know, just kind of going, going down in order. The facilities repairs, which I think some may have already gotten some allocation. But, you know, if, if there's, you know, a bunch of different fixes to buildings that we can do for about 50, $55,000, to me, you know, let's, let's get that done. Let's get that stuff fixed. The American Legion Kitchen, so, you know, their kitchen is out of commission. You know, I know they're trying to raise, I think their GoFundMe is up to $100,000, or they're asking for $100,000. I think they made a $60,000 request to the, to the select board. You know, I, I would like to see some money go, go to that. I think they're an important part of town. Obviously, the, the, you know, men and women who serve in our armed forces and, and are part of the legion are, you know, certainly worthy of, of some of the ARPA money to get their kitchen up and running so that that important part of the community can keep going, that they can continue to rent space and, and be able to afford the building by, by using it as, as a rental space. And you kind of need a kitchen to, to do that. The police siding budget gap funding, I know we kind of talked about this at our last meeting. You know, to me, you know, with that updated estimate that we had gotten, which was lower, significantly lower than that $500,000 amount that we had gotten. You know, I think we're, we're within striking distance of just finishing that project. So I think ARPA money can get us over that finish line and just, you know, let's, let's side, you know, let's finish the siding on the, on the police station and get that done. I think that's, to me, you know, very easy to, to get over that finish line for, for less than we've approved for, for other things that I, you know, that you could argue, argue level of importance. But, you know, let's, just get that done. The Melican Air Conditioning Project, I know I'm the only one who had that on my list. That project, and I do have some backup documentation for that, you know, is basically a project to air condition 30 classrooms in total on the third and second floor of Melican Middle School. You know, it, it's getting hotter, or at least it feels like it's getting hotter, you know? And it's getting warmer days earlier, you know, and that's also in September. There's, there's sometimes quite warm days. So understanding, right, we live in New England, there's fall and winter, so you're not going to run the air conditioning necessarily all the time. Although they could be used for dehumidification. So you're also using it to control mold. You know, I think for $98,000, which I think is around the same amount we approved for fixing the tennis courts and the basketball court at Melican, we could air condition 30 rooms in that building, extend the life of that building, make that building usable now in the summer. Right now, from my understanding, there is no summer programming really in that building, which now at least you have that option. You know, I, I, you know, I have a middle schooler at home. I hear how hot that, that building can get.
I've heard similar things.
Yeah. Even if it's comfortable outside, it doesn't necessarily mean it's comfortable in that building. And then do have confirmation, you know, through, through Keith Lavoie that, you know, he feels like it's something that if we were to allocate, something that could be procured and completed within the required timeframes of ARPA. So I think it's something that's actionable and, and, you know, we can, we can get done quickly. I know Chief Parenti made a request as well on behalf of police, fire, public works, school department regarding a study of the emergency communication system here in Northborough. And Chief Griffin, feel free to chime in if I get anything wrong or if you have anything to add. But just basically that, you know, the system, you know, unfortunately, isn't, you know, has, has a lot of issues with it. Potential for a lot of interruptions and breakdowns in communication. There's no backup system to really speak of. And I'm trying to paraphrase very quickly here for, for, for time's sake. But I, I think, you know, funding the step one and step two of that study is, is, is important. I, you know, getting, you know, to where we need to get with our emergency communications, I think is, is, is a, a good use of the, of the ARPA funding. I know there were some other requests for the police department security system and camera upgrades. And I know there's, there, there's a lot of detail involved with that. But, you know, when someone hurls a, a brick through the police station, it would be nice if they had cameras good enough. And I think we owe it to them to have cameras good enough to see who that person is so that they can, they can find out, you know, who did that and, and bring them to justice. So, and, and it's, and it's beyond that. I know there's, there's other issues with the cameras going out during interrogations, which are important. And, and I know I'm not doing it justice, but there, there's a lot of detail there. The crosswalk alert systems, I know I'm the only one who didn't have specific sidewalks listed there. I'm always the outlier. But I thought for traffic safety wise, looking at the meeting minutes from the traffic safety committee, I saw that they were planning to ask the select board to maybe have an item at the October town meeting for, for these crosswalk alert systems, which also, Lisa, you, you had mentioned, and Mitch, Mitch you as well, and, and Julianne, for seven locations, including a number of schools, for $250,000. So that seemed to be a, a quick and actionable way to get some additional traffic safety, especially by schools, you know, for, for, you know, a, a significant price, but, but something I, I would think could get done within the ARPA guidelines. And then the recodification of town code, you know, kind of looked like something that, that should be done. It hasn't been done in a while. And given the cost of all these other things, it seemed to be, you know, in a, in a, in a cheaper ballpark. So something that we could get done. And then the records archive project, significant amount of $50,000. But when you hear Icon say that one of the biggest reasons why we may need, and I know there's a lot of reasons, but one of the biggest considerations is document storage for a 40 some odd million dollar building. You know, what can we do with a records archive project to cut down on that, to save room, to use our space that we have or may build in the future more wisely? So, you know, those are the, those are the priorities that I found. You know, I tried to, again, have those things in the back of my mind that I mentioned earlier, but also things that, you know, we could, could get done within those ARPA, ARPA guidelines and timeframe. So.
Thanks, Mike. All right, I'll go through mine. I think I had the longest list. I, I tried to find things particularly for the 320,000 budget, things that would, that weren't just unto themselves the completion of a project, but would sort of be seed money towards a better public benefit. You know, some of that will fall into that category. So benches and picnic tables, I think in the downtown area, we, we have some, some nice benches, particularly at the Town Common. But there have been some that have just fallen apart and been picked up, like the one in front of CVS. I, I think we should, I would like to see us spend some ARPA money on additional seating downtown, including picnic tables, which we don't have. And my suspicion is then there will be a concern about litter or something like that. But when I walk into the restaurants, the restaurant owners are always talking about, oh, they wish there were picnic tables where people could eat outside. I, I think folks would love that. Laura spoke already about the, the town meeting signs. There's $300 there. The Historical Society submitted a very detailed and thorough request for ARPA funds back at the beginning of the ARPA request process. They have a number of projects, small and large, and that, that is for, for building related issues. That building is in need of, of some repairs and some improvements. And that is a building that hosts a lot of events, not just Historical Society events. They use that for, for art shows and occasionally comic book shows and random other things. So I think that is, you know, contributing a little bit towards that, I think would, would benefit the community as a whole. The Friends of the Senior Center also submitted a detailed request at the beginning of this process. They obviously do a great deal of good, that they support senior center activities to, to a great, great extent. They were unable to, as with Historical Society and other groups, not able to, during the worst of the pandemic, host their events that raised money that they then spend. So they're a little bit short on where they want it to be right now. They, they have some money, but I think understanding that a little bit more would really benefit the seniors in town convinced me to, to put some on there. The American Legion Kitchen, as you, you did, you said, Mike, that's really a facility that I have, I'm not a veteran. I go to that building all the time for all sorts of non-veteran events. There are a lot of things that get held there. And the fact that their kitchen is unusable really limits really what is really a public building. It's not owned by the public, but it's, it's for so many public functions that the sooner that we can help them get back up and running, the better. For, for White Cliffs, back when Lori was presenting the grant opportunities to us, she had talked about us possibly putting in $75,000 towards like seed money, you know, guaranteed match money for, that would help us towards next year's plan for, for the grant application. It's kind of where I, I came up with that, thinking, all right, you know, in my lower amount, I'd contribute 1/5 the amount. So $15,000. And if I had the whole million dollars, I'd contribute the whole thing. But as I'm thinking through it now, I don't know if we can do, if we can actually do that, because there's no way, I don't think there would be any way of having a contract in place of any benefit by the end of the year that would be related to the grant funding that she'd be looking for. We may have to look at other ways to fund that. Town code recodification, I'm a big fan. That is something that we are really in need. You know, I spent a little time on the Municipal Code and Bylaw Committee. And, and I'm a little bit of a bylaw nerd, as some people know. Just a little bit. Our, our bylaws are, are really in need of updating. You know, that's something that the town should do every 10 years. And it's been a lot longer than that. Since we've done that, we have bylaws that, that reference things that are just no longer applicable. As part of that, take a look and see where, where we can improve the bylaws. But recodification is something critical because if our, if our bylaw refers to, say, a state law by number, and that state law has changed or no longer exists, well, all of a sudden, what does that bylaw even mean? So it's really important to do. If we can't do it now, I mean, you know, we really need to put it in next year's budget and get it done. Normally, that's where, how it gets funded is, is in the budget every few years. The records archive project, I had the same thought there of in my smaller amount fund, a fifth of it with, you know, maybe other people would want to do that. And my larger amount fund the whole thing. In Tim's memo to us, he included something from the cable department on a bunch of upgrades for, for a couple of buildings. I'm focusing a little bit on the library. And there's an overall roughly $100,000 worth of work that the library would like to do there. One component of that is the hybrid meeting setup, similar to a simpler version of this, but really similar to what we have downstairs. That's something the library should really have for municipal meetings that are held at the library and other organizations that want to hold something. That's something we should, we should really have there. And, you know, we've spent roughly $35,000 on that. So I, I was thinking that would be an appropriate amount for that piece of it. The library does have some grant money available that the library trustees might be able to use for some of the other AV equipment needs that are there that are separate from the meeting, the hybrid meeting stuff. And then for my larger amount, I funded the whole thing, thinking that the library could then use their, their grant money for, for other purposes. Cultural Council Public Art is something that I'm a, a big fan of all of the things. We, we have all seen the chairs that are around town. We've all seen the doors that are at Ellsworth McAfee. They have some really nice ideas for additional public art, another mural. I think, I think Suzanne Cox may have sent the board some information on that recently. And so my thought was, was to fund that $35,000 request there. And then the next two are, are positions for functions where I think we are lacking in Town Hall. One is economic development. It still shocks me that the town of Northborough does not have an Economic Development Director or an Economic Development Committee. And I think we really need to get started on this. So this is really seed money, $40,000 to bring someone on board, probably as a contractor, maybe it's CM RPC, maybe it's to tell us how to organize that and what we need to do, and maybe even begin to start that. Particularly with downtown redevelopment, I, I really think we're lacking and we're, we're not moving as, as fast as we should with that. And then the second position or contractor would be a communications person. We've all seen how it is sometimes hard to get the word out on things. The, nothing at all against our, our wonderful local weekly newspaper. The Community Advocate does a great job. They're a weekly that are stretched really thin. And if you go back 20 or 30 years, the town had much more daily coverage of the things that were happening in town. And that's not going to come back. So many towns are hiring a communications person or assigning that responsibility to someone. Westboro and Shrewsbury have both done that. In their administration offices, they have a half person assigned to be the communications person for the town. And they do regular newsletters on things that are happening within government. And they know how to respond to questions that come in from the public in an effective way. And I, I think that's something we should move towards. Sidewalks, I only put $40,000 in there, partially, I'll admit, because at our last meeting, a number of other people were talking about sidewalks. Like, all right, people are going to allocate some sidewalk money. And, and also thinking here that, that the, you know, $40,000 isn't going to construct that much sidewalk, but it could do design work towards, whether it be grant applications for grants that need shovel-ready work or something like that.
Yeah.
That even with $40,000, you can get something done. And then my last item under the 320,000 request is the end of school year carnival. That was held just a few days ago at Ellsworth McAfee. My understanding is they didn't get funding for that next year. This was funded out of ARPA through, through the one that ended a couple of days ago through the town's B Well program. That B Well program is now concluded with the money spent. I believe that the Recreation Department, just due to them getting back on their feet after COVID, doesn't have the funds to do that for next year. It is possible, it's only $5,000, is my understanding, that they might be able to scrape that together. I think that's, that's, that's really become an annual event for the town. I don't know if your kids take advantage of that. My kids love it.
Yeah.
Even though they're now getting a little too big for the bouncy houses, they still do it. They haven't been thrown out yet. And then just a couple of things on, on the larger list is increase the funding to a few items, such as $145,000 for sidewalks, $80,000 each for the Economic Development Coordinator and the Communications Person. A couple of other changes in there. And adding in some money for crosswalk lights and additional just downtown design and beautification is how I rounded out my million dollars and change. So it's interesting. There are some themes throughout this and some differences. No bad ideas. But I, it's an interesting discussion. Does anyone, Scott, you had said that you had, had some thoughts, some feedback?
That's $56,000. And I believe, Mike, you had that on there as well. The detail, I don't have the details in front of me on what that narrative was, but I do know some components of that, as you indicated, Mike. but I do know some components of that, as you indicated, Mike. $6,000 to fix more stuff. There's plenty of stuff that needs to be fixed. But I just want to let you know, in your detailed paragraph, a component of that work has already been head funding allocated.
I think it was like the fire repointing and the senior center.
Yeah, there was the senior center repiping for the for the geothermal system.
Right. Yep. Thanks, Scott. Anyone else have any?
Back from the community to share these ideas. It was really hard to go through that list and really pick and choose what I think there's just not
So could you go to the end of that?
Absolutely.
When you added everything up, did you just add it up?
Those are just added up. So so this is the column for 320 each. And the reason this doesn't add up to 1.6 million is Lisa did not put dollar figures with her items. So with another $320,000, that's 1.6 million.
That's amazing.
Yeah. But so in theory, we could do that whole column. Could do absolutely everything in this column. And I mean, we, you know, we'd have to refine some numbers, and there would there would probably be a couple of these things that we couldn't do for practical reasons.
And there'd be some overlap where
There's definitely overlap. We'd be doing like three recodifications, which admittedly be a lot of fun.
So cool.
Yes.
So would my sidewalk be in the 320 plan?
So yours, yeah, your sidewalk, I put
Hey, Allen Street.
Yeah, I put it as 319 because, yeah, right, yeah, but with your your request, but I'm missing your recodification.
That's okay.
Which which we've accounted for, so that's all right.
Well, we we actually have to look at that because, for example, my grant suggestion, and then you said a certain amount for cultural council.
Yeah.
That
Mm hmm. Yeah, and I knew there would be overlap. And that's that's okay. That's that's
So we have to see where the overlap is.
Yeah.
These all projects that would qualify, like, do they meet the ARPA guidelines?
So I think it's probably going to vary.
Okay.
I think some I even thought about I think this is something we would have to have in place for the grant application next year.
Yep.
So next spring.
Yep.
For future committed unless there are additional design options, just design fundings for. So if or maybe we don't get the grant that we're applying say we will get the grant.
Okay.
You know, maybe we could put some ARPA money towards that. That's, yeah. So there there are some things that we can't do. That's that's okay.
Yep.
We've got a big list. Harder than it might be from, yeah, from an overview point of view.
So I guess if we were to look through this.
Yeah.
You know, I think one of my projects would not be feasible because Maple Street is going to be too too complex. Of us go back and re
Yeah, do we want to each submit a second now that we've seen each other's lists and had a discussion? Do we want to maybe submit a revision each? And then maybe you and I get together and try to try to consolidate that at that point?
And now, given what I've seen that's coming up from our fellow board members, I almost think the the money that is not going to be feasible from my proposal, I could pick where I could maybe
Yeah, I think
Attribute it to other people.
We could all do that. That's going to be harder to do individually.
Okay.
You know, maybe it's, you know, when if you and I get together, and we should get together both on our own and with Tim.
Okay.
To talk about the feasibility of some of these things, and then we can come back at that point that we we could then really consider.
And our next, we are only having one meeting in July, right?
That's right.
Okay, so to Scott's point.
Yeah, Scott.
One one thought or suggestion that you may want to consider after the duplicates are kind of consolidated a little bit is to run this feasible to meet the ARPA guidelines. That way, in your July meeting, as you indicated, you can be working off of a feasible list that could be implemented if authorized.
Kedid a few hundred thousand dollars towards sidewalks at our July meeting. Does that, do you think that gives you the time to do what you need to do? Or do you think we should, would you like us to meet earlier?
I mean, because that'll give me some time to vet out what we have here for sidewalk lists with Lori and her Complete Streets and Downtown Revitalization, as well as myself and an engineering consultant to look at the feasibility of the finance director doing. So when we come to you, well, when you're here in July, you can make decisions based on actual data. So yes, that would actually be appropriate.
Thank you. I appreciate your willingness to
It's like before we start breaking up our lists, we're going to have to have Tim, Jason
I would I would
Review it for
I would suggest each member send in, do the same thing, send it all to Angie. Consolidation.
Okay.
And then we meet with Tim and Jason.
Okay, so we're going to work off of the list of the 320K projects.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, you know, but there will be to deal with it.
So in practice.
Yeah.
Taking the 320 list.
Yeah.
And then reworking ours.
Yeah.
So for example, the say, two lists.
Yeah.
Right, so that, right, Julianne and myself wouldn't allocate that money. We wouldn't allocate 100,000, it would only be 50, so we would just do like, what, half?
You could you could do half, or you could you could allocate the thousand dollar thing that you're each allocating $50,000 to, you could each end up with $25,000 in change at the end of this. I'm acting like it's our money, it's not our money, it's
Right.
Right, I know, it's
Yeah. Meaning that recommendation could be another $25,000 towards towards another thing. Or you might say, hey, you know, put the other $25,000 towards the sidewalks, which is clearly Laura work off of our own priorities as much as possible. So what you think matters a lot.
Okay. When will we need to have our reprioritize lists?
No later than the end of this week.
Okay.
Oh, gosh.
If that's all right, yeah. Because we because we've got a few more steps to go. You and I have to meet and then I, one of the reasons I don't want to have Tim spend time are unlikely to make the cut.
Got it.
This is this is a lot of work for them.
Yes.
And implementing will be a lot of work. They may come back and say, yeah, we can do each of these, we can't do all of That sound like a reasonable approach, everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Look, like you've got, I'm already thinking, I don't know how much I'm going
Yeah, no, I I think it's a good approach, you know, because when you total up that 320 column, you know, you get to about where we're what we have left, so. But, yeah, submit the same one.
And that's that's fine, yeah. I will, what I'll do with mine is is that White Cliffs one, I'll confirm with Lori. The timing
Julianne and I can come to an agreement now that will just cut the facilities one in half and get 25, 25K back.
Which is what Laura, which is what Laura and I did on the the town meeting science, so. Yeah. With with this approach?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, great. I would ask that you, as best you can, assign some numbers. Depends on that.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Oh, yeah, the recodification.
Flexible for whatever is going to work.
You know what, I'll 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 keep it in mind, or how would we split it?
I'm just going to put more money in sidewalks.
Okay, you know, that's fine. Okay, all right, all right, well, you know what, you and I will have the opportunity to talk.
Okay.
Sharing and seeing, oh, we've got a raised hand. All right, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so I can actually see people again. Stop screen. David French. Identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Patrick French, 102 Cedar Hill Road. Are you anticipating voting then in the July meeting on allocation of the money?
I think there's a there's a very good chance we will be voting on at least some reasonable amount of the appropriation. I would not, my gut feeling is it wouldn't be 100% of the allocation then.
Certainly the ones that require, you know, to be worked on faster or something.
Yeah, I think I think, you know, anticipating what that meeting might look like, it would probably be the things that that require more work. We would we would really have to make a decision on sooner. And then things that we're just in agreement on, even if they don't require that much work, we might as well, I think it would be good to appropriate sooner rather than later, so things can get done.
Okay, just one last question. Was there a look back on the allocation up to this point of money that was put towards projects where no contracts have been put in place? I know it was raised on the last meeting, I just don't know if that, you guys haven't talked about it. So will that be covered too, or has that been done to see what other money is still out there?
I know, I think Tim reached out to to a couple of the department heads. I know the 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 library project, I believe, is moving forward from what I got from the library director. And I'm not sure where the Blake Street item is. At this point, we're working on unallocated money. And then also at our last meeting, we reallocated some of the unexpended money from the Proctor Street roof to the the
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Patrick. Okay, any other questions?
I I just want to put a plug in for the economic you know, as you're, if you have some extra money.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, as anyone has extra money, I mean, you know, I put, I think, $40,000 in more into it and get more value out.
And and we, I remember that Mayor Lee kept saying return on investment is a good idea, too.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was looking through with my, you know, some is financial return on investment, some
Agreed on the economic development position, but my concern is adding headcount right now. So that was my only hesitation for not putting money there.
Yeah, I think we would want to and have probably have to do that as a contract position.
I don't think you can.
Yeah, you legally can, but you're responsible for it. So you so let's say, for example, we funded and but as it turned out that 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 position was not funded at town meeting next April, well, we're going to have to lay off that person and pay all the unemployment that goes along with that. Where if it was a contractor position, to not only do some of the work, but tell us how to do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And some good, interesting ideas.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's a big, that's a big gap. Thanks.
For it, for if I've got a couple of extra, if I've got extra money to redirect.
Well, I, you know, I'm the CMRPC liaison, so I
And what would be an appropriate amount of money
Okay.
To do that. And, yeah, if you can let us know as we consolidate, that might be helpful.
Thank you.
What they say. Hands up. Next up, we have, we'll do cemetery deeds, and then we'll go back to the meeting minutes, and then we'll do reports. Cemetery deeds, 1189 and 1190. We have, we have a motion on that, Lisa?
And 1190.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, suggested by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor.
So let's, the the one that I was concerned about was May 6th, which, oh, gosh. I'd like a little more explanation of why the the Select Board decided not to support the grant for the amount of our sewer allotment that this project would take. And the second one was addressing traffic on Otis Street. And it does thought.
Okay.
And if that could be included in that, I think that'd be beneficial for anybody reading it. And this was the one, I think, for give to Angie later.
Okay, also in May 6th? I saw one typo in May 6th. Vote to authorize the chair of the Select Board to sign the documents.
Was that the re
The only thing, we could, we could still do that tonight. But so we want to, your suggestion, we hold on the May 6th meeting minutes to add in a little bit more detail on our thought process?
Unless we all agree that those two reasons being Unless we all agree that those two reasons being.
Is it May 6th that's the meeting that we talked about, the sewer? Because I had notes on it and I can't find it now.
Sorry, maybe it's May 20th. Oh, gosh.
Okay.
Yes, it's May 20th, select board meeting minutes, May 20th.
I would love to have the same level of detail on our comments as we do for the feedback that we get from public comments. Anything? Both for and against, that I would like represented in the minutes, so, if we can just, how can we make this easier for the people that are writing the minutes, so that it gets reflected appropriately?
May 20th, wait, is it?
I can't find them.
Yeah, May, May 20th I have in the.
No, I know that I have them, but I, I, they said, no, no, I'm sorry, I, I know I.
There's one paragraph that talks about, and so there's, so four paragraphs that.
Here it is, it's on page, uh, page. All this says for board members was that we wouldn't support it, but it doesn't explain why.
So there's the comment that I made that's in there, yeah, it's, it's, there's lots of. On a decision, there should be a little bit more, you know, I'm perfectly fine, it's, it's complicated to do meeting minutes, like, you don't, they shouldn't be verbatim.
Yeah.
But they should be. But the rationale that we used for making the decision that we did, it might be worth adding even a couple of sentences, board members, you know, express concerns X, Y, and Z, even. But having a little bit more in there, in this one, I think, I think I agree, might be beneficial. I think we have somebody new during the meeting minutes, I really like the format overall.
I do like them.
Yeah.
And I appreciate, I mean, they're, they're easy to read, they're very clear.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess that would be helpful.
Okay.
Because it is, it's a, this is a big, this was a big discussion, and it really is gonna have implications for the town.
Yeah.
And I think that residents deserve to know, really.
Yeah.
Where our thoughts are.
Yeah, I didn't, I mostly, you know, think shorter is fine on meeting minutes, because you can't be there until the end of time, I hope, but, but, yeah, we made a big decision, why we made that big decision should be fleshed out a little bit more, so, why don't we hold on May 20th?
Hold on May 20th, and for a couple other reasons as well.
Yep, why don't?
I don't think.
Good, go ahead.
All right, we don't need to discuss May 20th, I'm gonna hold that, because I have some, some remarks I'd like to say about that.
Okay, yeah, so you can email the office.
All right, so on May, May 6th, and I don't necessarily agree with making them short, because you can always watch the video, because I think the minutes, when people are looking at them, are looking to try to get a better understanding of what went on that day, and not have to go watch a two or three hour video. The reports, I thought we were doing pretty well when we handed in what we said on our reports, and it was helpful to be able to just take that and put it in. Mine on the 6th, I have a comment about Blake Street public parking. What was my comment?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I, I know from discussion with Diane that there were, there were a lot of questions from the person doing the meeting minutes, what, what level of detail needed to be in there for reports, which are not decisions, so I think a concise summary is what's appropriate for meeting minutes.
Well, again.
And we could decide as a group, something otherwise.
I think we have to look at some of it, because a comment about Lake Street doesn't mean anything. The comment could be on anything, or there could be more than one comment.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that, that, that I would, I do like it, I don't think we got into any great, great terrible detail in the past, but I don't think minutes should just be done quickly, because it's easy. I think, I know it's difficult, you know, I've done some of them myself, and I think that we really do have to give them a little bit more attention. So, I'm gonna put something else back in that report on the 6th, and I also want.
Do you have something to, do you have something for a motion now, or are you suggesting we hold on the 6th?
I wanna hold on the 6th.
Thoughts?
Okay, I'm okay, I'm fine with that, we're holding on the 6th and the 20th, but to Lisa's point.
20.
I was told that minutes are legal documents.
Me, too.
The video is not. Can we verify that? Because that, that means the minutes are way more important.
I mean, they're both, yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not gonna, I'll tell you what my basic understanding is, that in, that meeting minutes are important in certain court cases, if, particularly like, you know, a planning, a board that gets appealed a lot, the meeting minutes are critical to the, showing the details of the decision-making process. So for decisions, that's, you know, back to the decision on the sewer, I think it's important to have a little bit more detail than there was. For reports, there's no legal implication of reports.
Correct.
Something that one member says, that we're not voting on at that meeting, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna go so far as to say it's irrelevant, because it's relevant, but it's not, it's not a summary of the logic towards a decision, so there's no, that I can think of legal implication of a level of detail on something that is really just a bunch of comments by individual board members.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're disagreeing on that, it's just, it's just, you know, I think the, the input so far is, let's give a little more detail to the big decisions that we make, because it is a legal document.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but, I said, it's, it's tough to find, it's just tough to find that threshold. I think here, we were, we were missing some, not, not so much individual member comments, but overall thought process.
Yeah, yeah.
That I think was missing on the sewer one. But I think, I think reports, I mean, this, the reports take up a full page, more than a full page of the meeting minutes on May 6th. Honestly, reports would be perfectly legal saying Mitch Cohen made some reports, Julianne Hirsch made some reports, and that would be sufficient, because there's no action taken. It's items discussed, actions taken, and.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
That's way too short.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm, I'm saying, I've, I've seen many, many, many meeting minutes that look just like that.
Well, doesn't mean that they're right.
Yeah, well, I think they're okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, like, looking at the agenda, right, and like, like you said, you don't want things to be verbatim, but tonight's agenda, right?
Yeah.
The very important topics that you should err maybe on more the side of getting more than less.
Yeah.
Were our town hall feasibility and ARPA, right, those are the ones that.
Where we made decisions.
Right, exactly.
Forward to decisions.
Or had a lengthy discussion about it, where we're very specific.
Yeah, yeah.
I will, excuse me, I will chime in, though, I think from a reports perspective, when my fellow board members are sharing feedback from their subcommittees in those reports, I need some level of detail to remember what the conversation was and where to go back to, especially when we've got a lot of liaisons that we're members to, so.
Yeah, okay, maybe, maybe we continue the overall discussion when Diane is back from vacation, because she's the one that's been overseeing that process, and, and go from there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, so, sounds like we're wanting to hold on May 6th and May 20th, are we okay moving forward with the others?
Mm-hmm.
That's good, because we're, we need to do some catch-up, all right. So, Lisa, I think you had that motion, if you wanna make a motion on those?
Second. I move the board to approve the April 8th, April 22nd, April 29th, and May 13th meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne, any other discussion? We're good?
We're good.
Okay, all those in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor, so we've at least approved four, that's good, and, and we'll, we'll continue the discussion on the others.
Thank you.
And, you know, if anyone has any specific recommendations for the May 6th or May 20th meeting minutes, you know, send them, I'd say, to Diane.
Do I need to resend my comments for the sewer discussion, or will they redo that now?
I would, I would say, send a quick email and say.
This was my key point?
Yeah, this was your key point.
Okay.
They'll, they'll see it, but I think it can't hurt.
Okay.
Get something across, okay. All right, we've done the meeting minutes. Make sure we haven't missed anything else. Speaking of reports, reports, Mike, you have any reports tonight?
So, so one question I have for reports, you know, I know for the liaison assignments, I got a lot of, of Kristens, and then there was gonna be maybe a couple of changes, are those official now? So am I sort of official liaison to different boards and things?
Oh, I have to, I have to send that out, there was one last question that I, that I had for you, I'm gonna send those out tonight or tomorrow morning, yes, those are, those are all official. I mean, they're, they're not official official.
Okay, and I've been holding off on reaching out, because I know you said you wanted to, to make it official or do something sort of email.
Yes, yeah, other than, Lisa, you had suggested that maybe Laura take personnel board, other than that, the, the list that I had circulated as the hopeful finalist is done.
On the interview piece, I know, right, we're, we're trying to work that out with Angie now.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, all right, so I apologize, I'll send that around today, I just, I was away for a week and caught up with.
Sure, I just wanted to make.
That's, that's the only, that's the only change from the draft that was sent around, so that should get posted to the town website within the next few days.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, just one other thing I would mention is, I was able to attend the Mass Municipal Association New Select Board Member Training.
Good.
It was on a Friday, so I had to use personal time to go, but, so that was in my feedback to try and maybe do a Saturday, but, but it was, it was, it was, it was great, being able to meet, you know, other select board colleagues from across the Commonwealth, and just how common all the issues are across the Commonwealth for communities, big and small, you know, they're, they're just not here in Northborough, they're, they're all over, and being able to bounce ideas off each other, you know, getting sort of that select board 101 training for myself, who's never done this before, was really, I think, important, and covering topics about, you know, municipal finance and open meeting law, stuff about communications, public relations person, and how they do it in different towns, and, and things that you can take back, you know, so it was a lot of good information, you know, and I, and I have the, the slides and the info as well, so if anybody, you know, if you still have them from your meeting, or you want me to forward them over to you, I can certainly do that, if you wanted to thumb through them, but that was, that, that was really great. Yeah, as far as, you know, any other reports, I guess, don't, don't have liaison reports. One thing I would mention, I don't know if this should fall under reports or other business before the board, but, you know, for like, the, and I thought, you know, Scott and, and Bill and, and the gentleman from Icon did, did a good job in their presentation, it would have been nice, though, to have that material beforehand, so I just wanna make sure, you know, my messaging, I think we'd all agree, is that if, you know, we're, we're getting these types of presentations or material, you know, that we should have it, that we shouldn't have, be expected to go hunt and find it on the town website, or, or figure out what's old and what's new, or what's current, so just, you know, to make sure that we're, we're receiving that stuff beforehand, so we can prep and prepare, so, but that's all I have for, for reports.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Julianne?
Um, so, important date, this Saturday is Porch Fest, sponsored by the Cultural Council, and there will be some unexpected, would you call them cameo appearances, by some of our, at least one of our members here?
I'm not performing, I'm hosting, but not performing.
That's an important, important thing to do, so that's 12:30 to 6, and we'll probably start on the town common, but there's lots of information on their website, and also just a friendly reminder that the auction will end on, on June 22nd, on Saturday, and so get your bids in and purchase some of those beautiful chairs and doors. Thank you so much, that's it.
Okay, thank you, I'll move over to Lisa, any reports tonight?
Just a couple of short ones to, to piggyback on Julianne's, is a, backing, back up Porch Fest, Free Community Music Festival, promoting local musicians and singers around town. From 12 to 6, there'll be music playing on the town common, Blake Street, outside three small businesses, Se La Vie, gather provisions and paint your own pottery. Both Trinity and First Parish Church will have awesome performances, and three gracious homeowners offer porches, yards, and will be hosting musical talents as well. The auction of the hand-painted doors, aeronic chairs, and rockers will be finished on Saturday night. There's a draft in the map, waiting on, can be found on the town website under the Cultural Council Porch Fest. Second is that design integri, excuse me, design review started to discuss the municipal sign choices and putting together the options and costs, to which we'll get that together and then send it off to the board of selectmen for their approval. And finally, there is a shout-out to thank Richard Mattress of Henry's Used Cars and Trucks for letting us use his front lot, or drone landing pad, to take some photos of some of the properties that we're gonna be using for the design review construction guidelines. And that's it for my reports. Yeah, thanks.
I have no reports today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just got a couple of things, which I will piggyback what everyone else has said, the Cultural Council hosting Porch Fest. If anyone wants to hang out on my front porch or in my front yard, 2 to 4 p.m., the Highland Woods Project will be performing, either on my porch or on my driveway, they haven't decided yet. It looks like a really good group, and, so, it'll, that'll be a fun day, I'm gonna try to go to as many of them as I can, and on maybe more, more important but less fun matters, the fire station building project has moved its, its cost estimate process further along, so at the end of schematic design, we went out and actually got two cost estimates, one through the architect, one through the project manager, then they had a long meeting to consolidate those, that meeting where we discussed that was a couple weeks ago, and is, of course, available for anyone to, to watch, so the original cost estimate, back from a few months ago, was 45 to 50 million, and now we're looking at 41.9 to 44.1, based on decisions already made. As the design gets further, there is less risk, if you will, less variation that the cost estimators use, so they can be a little bit narrower with their estimates, and the reason that there is a variation still is there are decisions left to be made and, and design work left to be done. Design work at this point, as we go into the design development phase, is more about, you know, what type of electrical panel you're gonna use, and where the switches are, and things like that, and much less on what's the shape of the building, that's, that's long done, and we have a couple of, only a couple of big cost implication decisions left to make, such as, are we gonna include solar panels in the project, or are we gonna, you know, look at them separately? You know, on the solar panels, we have to do the conduit to the roof and things like that, and we're a few other little details left to be ironed out, but most of the design is complete at this point, so I wanted to let you and the public know about that, and that concludes my reports. Tim, if you're still on the line, do you have any reports for us tonight?
I, I have a few things, but I'm gonna just send them to the board, they're not germane to anything you guys covered tonight, but just information, I'll put them on the TA corner, so the public who are watching can see those as well.
Great.
Tomorrow, but I'll get them to you tomorrow and on the web tomorrow as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks, Tim, and is there any, so that, is there any business to come before the board that we haven't already discussed?
No business, but I did want to just mention something about the question of liaison.
Sure.
Appointments. Laura and I had just switched last year, where she took personnel and I took traffic safety. That's not adding personnel to her. It was just a switch.
Yeah, I don't think...
I think that was recreation.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, okay.
And if any two members want to switch, just switch. I mean, it's...
And I'm flexible with whatever you prefer.
Oh, no, you can have both. I'll stay with traffic safety.
So, you know, if it's, you know, suddenly a board is interesting to you, talk to the other board member that currently has them, or if it's an evening that opens up for you, or an evening that closes up to you, or anything like that, that's easy. That's just, you know, editing a Word doc and, and having it posted on the site. So that's, it's not ironclad for the year. Thanks, Lisa. Is there any public comment before we close out this evening? Definitely seeing none in the audience here in person, and seeing none remotely. I will declare public comment closed. We have done the meeting minutes, and the only thing we have left to do is adjourn. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved. Second?
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura to adjourn. All those in favor? Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We are adjourned at 10:34 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Good night, Mr. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.